My name is Alana Rogers.
And my name is Nellie Romano. How are you today? We hope you've had a great day. We are so glad to be here and to be sharing some information about our community and school.
Hi, my name is Alana Rogers.
And my name is Nellie Romano.
We are from the SMS Student Council. We are here to share some important information with you today, including how everyone in this school has a growth mindset. Let's get started with a few things. First of all, the night that everyone's been talking about, the Halloween Howl. The Halloween Howl was a fun night for everyone, with options of snacks, games, and a costume contest.
And all around fun.
And don't even get me started with the Fall Festival, with pumpkin painting, snacks and games, and pictures with fellow friends and family.
Let's sadly move on, but to more exciting news.
I'd like to thank Miracles for Mimi for a school-wide opportunity to see Gordon Corman come to our school for a friendly visit. And some 5th grade got to do writer's workshop with him, and everyone loved his visit. Which reminds me of the Cross Country Team. The Cross Country Team is a great opportunity for your child to run in races, make new friends, and build a good sportsmanship with other team members. Some quotes from the Cross Country Team. "I like cross-country because it's fun. I like thinking of it as running for Stratum in the team. It's fun to know that everyone is on the same page."
What about another?
"I like cross-country because it helps me train and get ready for other sports. I also like running because we are a team." Wow, all those quotes were amazing.
We can all agree on that.
We sadly have to wrap up with the time, but we have one more quick announcement.
Quick shout-out to Mrs. Lucas, our principal. "Thank you for making students your top priority. Your hard work is the foundation for our achievement. We can only start to imagine how difficult the job of school principal is, but you handle it with grace, enthusiasm, and laughter. And we can't wait to see what else you have, along with everything you already do." Would everyone mind saying a quick thank you with us to the most hardest-working laughing Mrs. Lucas?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys were amazing! So good! That was an amazing presentation, thank you so much. Those activities sound great.
Good reader.
Would you mind a question or two?
No.
Does anybody have any questions?
I don't think so.
Can I ask you, I am really sad that I missed the Gordon Corman when he came in. Have you guys read his books?
Yeah, so in school, we read the unteachables for the first book to get to know him. So when he came to school, I wasn't there that day, but I heard it was really fun.
Yeah.
And we got to ask him some questions.
Yeah, so cool. That's amazing.
Everyone gathered in the cafeteria, and he did a presentation. And he showed us a couple of his books, and it was really cool.
Yeah. How's composting going?
Um, it's pretty good. It's smelly sometimes, but it's good.
Yeah. I know, you guys are the big kids, so you have to... Well, I guess you're not even in the cafeteria with the little kids, huh? In order to show them.
Yeah, there's composting bins all throughout lunches.
Okay.
And you get to just put any leftover food in the composting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, that sounds great. Thank you guys so much. Really appreciate you coming out tonight. You guys are so good. Thank you, thank you. All right. Great. So I think we'll move on now to approval of the minutes. Does anybody have any changes to... I think all of us were here for all of them, right? Do I have a motion for approval of the minutes? And then we can do a discussion if there's any edits?
I can move Sophie.
Okay, thanks Sophie. Any discussion on the minutes? Any edits anybody would like to make? This is the October 16th public, October 16th non-public, session 1 and 2, and then October 30th public. Yeah, I thought they looked great.
Yeah.
All right. All right, do I have a... Let's see. I guess, so now we'll just do all in favor?
Yeah, I just need a second.
Do you have a second? Thank you, Eric. All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, 5-0-0. All right, moving on. Ready for the superintendent report?
So in your board pack, there's two pieces of the finance. There's the budget, and then there's the current year financials. So for the current year financials, we did add quite a bit of expense over the last month since we met, but I just want to remind everyone, this is still early in the year, so we are still building the encumbrances based off of student need and still finishing out the hiring process. So while it might seem like a lot, a lot of it was some positions being filled as well as building the encumbrances based off of student need. Did anyone have any questions on the items?
I have a question. I'm still understanding, like, the health and dental. Was that... Because it's a pretty large amount. Was that anticipated? Or was that the difference that you made a guess of what it would be? And then that was the difference between them?
Yep, so at the beginning of the year, there's an open enrollment period. And so we get bills once a month. So last month, this would be the change from the prior month. We encumber for the full year. So it would be people that either made changes, that now we're now encumbering for the full year.
So it looks like this is still in line, though. We're still looking at an balance of 183.
Correct. And at this point in time, there's no unanticipated revenue because the revenues are set in the fall. That's what's done right before your tax rate was set, which was last week. And so if it was known revenue, I would have included it in the planned revenue. So now going forward, hopefully we'll have unanticipated revenue that would add to that fund balance.
Okay.
And again, you can't plan to spend unanticipated revenue, but it's there to help your fund balance at the end of the year.
Did you say the tax rate was set?
It was.
Yeah? Been published?
It was, at least in the DRA portal. But I also do a side-by-side analysis, which I'm happy to send to you. And I sent to all the superintendents. Every year, I line up the tax rates side-by-side for all of the towns that make up SAU 16. So there's different parts of your tax rate. There's the education part, the municipal part, the county, the state. And what I do is I line up all the sections side-by-side. So I'm happy to share that with you if you want.
Yes, I saw people talking about it online today, too. And then it's good timing for yours. Okay. Do you want to just say it so it's in the...
Sure. For communication, next Monday, the 18th, we have a fireside chat on Zoom from 6:00 to 7:00, online only, with Ms. Molly O'Keefe, the lovely. So she'll kind of go over the tax rate, what it is, how it's calculated, and how the school budget kind of plays into that. So we really hope you can join. It will be recorded if you can't join from 6:00 to 7:00 next Monday, the 18th.
Quick question on Sophie. Do you know how it's going to be... That's going to be advertised to people? Is it like in a newsletter, or...
Yeah, I can... I was going to give this in my update, but I can do it now. Yeah, I put it in the newsletters that go out. So the SMS newsletter, the PTO newsletter, and the town newsletter. I also printed out flyers and put those in Town Hall and the library, and just let folks know in Town Hall, and posted it on Stratum Talks twice now.
And I think Sophie, we set the date almost two weeks ago, so it's been advertised for some time now.
I can do a blast tomorrow as a single post on Town Square versus like in the newsletter, because sometimes it's easier. If it's a... Some things we're doing a single post, so they get more attention. So I can do that tomorrow.
Yeah, I'll probably do one more Stratum Talks post on Monday, just to remind folks that it'll be that night.
Can you... Is that share... I tried to share it off Stratum Talks, but it didn't let me.
No, you can't. I don't think you can share on Stratum Talks.
Okay.
But if you want, you can send me an email, and I can email you the flyer and the text, and then you can share that.
Or if you put it on your personal, I could just share it from your personal.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't know if you feel comfortable doing that, but yeah. But I'm really excited about that. That's going to be great.
Okay.
Just a question on public comment.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we should probably start public comment. So we'll do... We'll do 15 minutes now, and then 15 minutes at the end of the meeting, because we are going to be talking about the budget. So we'll start the 15 minutes now. Is there anybody interested in public comment? It can be on the encumbrances or anything else. Okay. So we'll just keep the timer running.
And just the other thing, the manifests are over there somewhere. There's four of them.
One more, yeah. We just need one more.
Yep, just a quorum of the board to sign us. Perfect.
So just a couple more questions. So that it looks like there's personal development, 20,000. Is that more than anticipated?
So it's not more than anticipated. This is just the change from the prior month. So when we start the year, we encumber what we know.
Yeah.
But as people sign up to take classes, we know we're going to have some employee reimbursements. We have a cohort in this Southern New Hampshire University program. So it's a combination of personal reimbursements for personal PD, any PD that Principal Lucas has in the building, as well as this new cohort.
Okay.
And that, again, it's... And all of this is not above and beyond what's in the budget. It's just a change in what we encumbered last month.
Okay.
And you're going to see this change every month, because we don't encumber things like substitutes, because we don't know how many are going to happen. So as the year progresses, you're going to see expenses added.
Yeah.
Or decreased. Like, no plowing if it keeps like this.
It just seems large this month. You know, obviously what you addressed, and I'm thinking about some of our other expenses, so.
And we do build encumbrances for the full year. So at the beginning of the year, it will seem larger because when we add that encumbrances for the whole year.
Yep. Okay. And I guess that's great news about hiring. Yeah. Are there still outstanding positions?
We are looking for one additional ESP right now.
Okay.
And food services, but that's not new.
Gradually.
Yeah.
Was the MTSS coordinator position hired as anticipated?
Yep.
Great.
She's actually here tonight, Brandon Martin, to do the presentation.
All right, sounds great. Any other questions? Yeah, for Molly.
Great, thank you.
Okay. And then are you going to walk through the budget with us?
Yes, I think Kate, were you going to plan to walk through the budget?
Sure.
The first page that you guys have is sort of the larger object codes. Do you have this page?
Yeah, so in the state, they organize things by function. So we have to have all regular and under 1,100, special under 1,200. So that first page that Kate is mentioning is just a summary by grouping of function. So you see behind it is the line-by-line budget, but that first page just groups it by function.
So typically, the first run in November, we just look at it sort of as like a 30,000-foot view. We don't get into too many specifics. You'll notice, really, the big changes that you would notice are mostly associated with special ed costs, which is a national problem, but particularly a problem across the state. And that's everything from, like, related services have gone up significantly, but out-of-district placements have gone up significantly. And then transportation is really expensive. So when you look at the budget, that's a good percentage of the increase that you'll see over FY '25. Some of the other smaller increases are just part of the bargaining agreement, the CBAs, and just either steps and tracks and the next year's, you know, salaries that are equated with their reviewers at Stratum. So we can go on to like sort of the more detailed, and if there's any questions that come up for any of you. We tried to be... I mean, we went through this, I don't even know how many times. And nearly everything, we kept flat or went down if we could. And if there's a little bit of increase, it's either inflation, like things that are just sort of unavoidable, that we can't control, or related to contracts. Whether that's like the plowing contract or teacher's contract. And like I said, the vast majority of anything you would see is special ed costs that have gone up. The whole SAU is having conversations about how we...
Kate, I have a question. Do we have out-of-district placement costs for SMS?
We do. They're in the budget. Yep.
How did professional development go down so much? Eight, 17, 18, 17%?
So that is based on actuals from the previous years before. So part of what, in both of the CBAs, there is... Teachers and pairs are allotted a certain amount of money for professional growth and professional learning. And you do your best based on the actuals from the year before with an idea of like what conferences have maybe gone up a little bit, what have gone down a little bit, what are people historically going to over the past couple of years, and you sort of come up with a number based on that.
And I'm sorry, did you mention the special ed transportation costs?
I did. They've gone up significantly. So part of a couple of things. So for a student that is placed out of district, there are not places that are local. So like, we have... There are students that are driving an hour by bus to their school, and then an hour back in the afternoon. So that alone, if you think about that, is just a substantial cost. And then we also have specialized transportation for some of our students that go here as well. And so that has also gone up. And so those are the two, really, the two items that make up special ed transportation.
For our next meeting, Dr. Bennett, our Director of Special Services, is going to give us a synopsis, because the majority of our drivers in every budget in SAU 16 and around other schools is special education. So she's going to put it, which I think is really important for our residents and our voters to know, that we really tried to keep this flat-funded as much as possible, especially here with a possible building project. But special education is driving all of our budgets up. So we're going to give you a rationale to why for transportation costs, contracted services. So we'll have that. So you'll be able to understand that a little bit more in depth. You just need a little bit more time for this round of board meetings. But for December, each board will get that rationale. You'll see costs going up to close to 17% in some areas, which, again, that drives your whole budget up. So just want you to be prepared for that, and you'll know you'll have that greater rationale for your December meeting.
Yeah.
And then there's also a few items in here, like the offices of the superintendent. That is your portion of the SAU budget that you vote on in the joint board meeting last month. In regards to transportation, for student transportation, we have what's called the 3+2 contract. And so we would be budgeting right now for the fourth year, so that first year of the plus-two. So it was a three-years locked-in where we had negotiated. It was 2.8, 2.85, 2.0... Oh, sorry, it's 2.85, 2.9, 2.95. And then 30, 30, the final two years. Now, Dr. Andruski and I did meet with First Student, and they are in a negotiation year on their side. And so we told them that we're deep in the budget process at this point, and we are budgeting for the 3.0%. And they haven't gotten back to us yet on what their proposal is, but they're trying to stay as close to that 3%. So we might see a slight change next month, but we hope to keep it as close to that as possible. But also, we decreased one bus, because we are trying to run a full fleet. But the reality is, is we don't think we'll get a complete full fleet. So that's why you actually see a decrease on that line. And then for support services, that's mainly our health and dental benefits for the entire staff. And it was a little bit different this year. If you remember, for those of you that were on the board before, we always talked about GMR, Guaranteed Maximum Rate, and then we would get the real rate in the spring. They did away with the GMR. It's now the rate. But they gave us a different rate per plan. So we had to go in and see where everyone... What everyone's plans were. And it ranged anywhere between, I think it was 4.7 and 7.2%. So we had to escalate the insurances at that percentage. Dental was at 5. It was the health was at that, those other percentages. But also, we tried to look at the staff to say, who's getting married? Who's having babies? Without being politically incorrect and asking people. And so that's how we had to... Came up with that number there as well.
Yeah.
I have a question for you. This is kind of like veers off a little bit to what you're talking about. I was just looking at like the line items in here, and there's a few for like new furniture and fixtures and equipment that are more... They're asking for more for... And like, they're all marked like furniture fixtures, equipment. And then there's another one for replacement of furniture, fixtures, equipment. And I think those were the couple. And I'm just wondering, because I'm looking at the summary, I assume those kinds of things would be under facilities and maintenance, which actually went down, even though those were like...
I can speak to that, yeah. So some of those are actually would be in regular education. So one of the things that, as we had been planning for six years for a building renovation, was the soft costs that are associated with the building, which includes desks, chairs, all the things that go in classrooms. And now that that's no longer the scope of the project for the board, we do have to put ourselves on a recycle... Replacement cycle for the furniture in the building. And so that's one grade level, chairs, desks, all of the things that they need in classrooms, because that was going to be wrapped up into the building project. And so rather than put them all in one year, we're going to get ourselves, which is what we've done on a variety of other things, like the ductwork is now on a rotation. You try to get the technology is on a replacement cycle. And so some of those are in regular education, because that's regular in classrooms. There are things within special ed. So it's a law that you have all fireproof filing cabinets for all files. And ours are completely full, so we need those. Those are like significantly expensive because of the quality that they have to be. So there are things like that for special ed. There are some things that are equipment and stuff that would fall under facilities, and that would be like a vacuum, or we have like things that clean the floor, like those things. So it depends on the line. And I think Molly was talking about, like, 1,100 is regular education, so you'd see equipment under that. 1,200 is special ed, you would see it under that. So it would fall multiple times. It just depends on the major function.
Gotcha, okay. I do see those numbers.
On the file cabinets, do we use off-site storage for older files? No? Is there a law or a rule for how long you have to keep files after a child leaves the school?
So certain files... So if we are sending the student to another school, the file would go with them. It's their last school of record. So if we're the last school of record, it's seven years.
And then just to clarify, you're saying that the costs that you have associated with new furniture and fixtures and equipment on here, those line items under 1,100, are under regular education? And that only covers one grade level?
And at rate... So we also started the replacement of the cafeteria tables. We started that two or three years ago. And last year, we ended up cutting it, so we have to get it back in. And that's like, I think, a $17,000 just out of that alone. It's just the six or seven cafeteria tables. So it is furniture for regular education, which is all students.
Okay.
How many speech pathologists does the school have?
We have three full-time speech language pathologists.
I think, I know we're sort of taking a 30,000-foot view. You know, how did you guys feel about the 4.9% change?
What is it? Like, what's an average? I've only been on the board for, this is my second year. What's like the average over time?
Yeah. Last year, was it like 3.1, I think?
I would have to go back. I know this year, it's hard to look year-over-year, especially with the years that we had COVID. But I will say, all districts are experiencing budget increases in line with this budget for districts in SAU 16, with the exception of one. But that one district is also reorganizing staff. So it would not be an apples-to-apples comparison.
Last year, our budget was 4.1.
Okay. After the cuts?
Yeah.
What's media salaries?
The learning commons, the librarian? They're not considered... You would refer to them as a librarian. They're media technology specialists. Literacy, media technology, actually.
You know, it's hard to argue with the increases. I mean, we can all just say anecdotally that we're all seeing massive increases in our daily lives and everywhere. It's just hard... It's, again, at the 50,000-foot level, it's hard to say, okay, well, we had a decrease in the population of the school, but we've got, you know, a little bit larger-than-average increase in costs. But it's, you know, it's death by 1,000 cuts, right? You know, it's like, what do you do?
Yeah, to that point, Paul, what is the enrollment that this is targeted against? I think we're at 477 in the latest report. I'm talking for K through 5. Or I'm sorry. Yes.
It's on the last page.
Yeah, I think it was 477.
It's 477.
475.
477, K through 5.
Okay. Is that what this is targeted against?
Well, this includes preschool, right?
Yeah, preschool's in this.
Preschool is subsidized, though, right?
Right.
Not always, because you've got to pay for their salaries.
There's no subsidy... There's no income revenue from...
Very little.
Pre-K?
Very little for the peer group that comes in.
It's still down.
And even if you have to expend it, you have to have it in your budget, revenue offsets the expense, but you still have to appropriate the funds.
Sure.
So the revenue will not relieve the expense. It offsets the expense.
Yeah, I guess what I'm getting at is we're just down in enrollment.
Sure.
So I would love to know like what our staffing plans is, both contracted and non-contracted. In 2019, we have 534. That was 21K per kid. We're at 33K a kid for the year. I mean, this is a significant jump.
Sure.
I mean, I think if the enrollment was back up, or if you were planning on it being up, and you had some substantiation around that, I'd be more persuaded to it. But it's a big increase on a per-student cost basis.
What's our average class size?
Depends on the grade level.
Yeah.
And so one of the questions that we got asked was, at what point do we talk about potentially going from five or six teachers per gradeable to less? And that's a conversation we're going to end up having to have. But it's a little bit more complicated than just you're reducing, because it depends on where your spikes and ebbs and flows are. So that would be a conversation we would have to have.
I realize it's not so simple. But I mean, we...
And when you say 34 kids, you're not talking about 34 kids in a grade level. You're talking about 34 kids from pre-K through 5, and that could be just to a grade level. And that doesn't reduce a classroom teacher.
Right, right.
It doesn't reduce the speech-language pathologist. It doesn't reduce staffing when you're talking about seven grades for 34 kids.
Yeah, but just generally, are we in the low 20s, high 20s, low 30s?
Nope. So in kindergarten, I think we're 16 kids. I can pull it up for you. It's actually in your report, isn't it?
Yeah, we have it.
Probably is, probably is somewhere.
Kindergarten, around 16.
The last page.
I think our lowest is actually our grade, is that so?
Is it in the report?
Yeah, I can pull it up one second.
Very last page, usually, yeah.
Yeah.
There's a lot of policies here.
Yeah, it's our current fifth grade and first grade, yeah.
Well, the class sizes are attractive, they're-
It was a board decision a number of years ago. This board has talked about whether they want to revisit it or not, but that was a decision the board set the parameters for minimum and max.
And what did the board set for minimum and max, please?
I got it right here. So that was January 8th, 2020, minimum for kindergarten is 13, maximum 17. First through third, minimum of 15, maximum of 18, and fourth and fifth, minimum of 18, maximum of 22. So that's what the boards have been working on since that meeting and proposal.
Question?
Talked about, it's not something you can just adjust each year, right?
Right, right.
Yeah.
And is that in contract at all?
No.
Is that just the target?
That was what the board put forth, it's not in policy, but that's what they put forth as your practice for this building and how we would staff it.
And when was that decision made?
At this, by the board, on January 8th, 2020.
January 8th, 2020.
Yeah, right before COVID.
Yeah, were we in session at that time? The school was still operating, right?
Until March. March 13th.
I don't know, I mean, I'll just throw it out there, maybe it's something that the board wants to revisit. Everybody is struggling, you know. You'd have, I mean, Kate, you would know this better than anybody, whether the statistics, whether you can statistically say, you know, add, shift that all up two by two, what happens? You know, I don't know.
I think there are a lot of factors when you're talking about class size that matter, and I think it has always been a conversation with administration, the board, about what matters to the board and what they want to support and what they feel is not financially something that they can support. It's always been just a mutual conversation about, we know there are benefits to small class size, we know there are benefits to opportunities to have a community that's small enough that you can get personalized education, and part of that is that SAU is committed to personalized education, meaning you take kids where they are, understand that they're all really different places, and that it isn't just sort of rote learning. And so if that remains the commitment of the board, small class sizes will remain important. If the board shifts their goals and focus, then it would shift what the education looked like for the kids based on the amount of kids with the teacher. I mean, I think that's, I think every board faces that exact conversation. I don't think this is a Stratum-specific conversation, I think it's a conversation every community board has.
It's easy for a board to reduce it to numbers, but it's not easily reduced to numbers from the other side. I think, I appreciate that, I think we all appreciate that.
I think the complexity of student profiles are really different, the world kids are facing are really different, and so they come to school in a very different place to engage in learning. I think you probably hear about it as families about what their child's experience like is in their classroom on a day-to-day basis, and if you have a teacher with 22 kids, really trying to personalize with kids that have very different academic strengths and academic challenges, social-emotional strengths and social-emotional challenges, it gets harder and harder the more kids you have and you're by yourself, is what I would suggest.
Does every classroom have an assistant, teacher's assistant?
Not every classroom, but most. We're pretty close, but not every classroom.
So that, I mean, that helps.
Oh, it makes a, our ESPs are phenomenal, they make a huge difference on the experience our kids are having, and our teachers are having, like, it is a really collaborative, beautiful effort.
I would think so, yeah.
They're, yeah, I cannot say enough. They, yeah, yeah.
Do they help?
All the time, and they're, what I love, I mean, they are willing to do anything, but they also are like the consummate learners, so because of their CBA, they're engaging in professional learning, and so I could say to any one of them out there, hey, I need you to run a small literacy group in kindergarten for the next six weeks, and they're like, okay, I've done the training, I can go do that, like, that's a gift to be in a place that offers that to kids. Like, the personalization and the expertise is incredible.
Lot of flexibility.
Yeah, incredible. It makes the small space work.
Yeah. I think it's always been my experience too, in terms of behavior in the classroom. Also, I know for my kid, like, sometimes she connects to the teacher, sometimes she connects to the parent, right? So there's always, there can be a good relationship in that classroom, too. I think, I think the real issue, right, is the special ed. I mean, it's just phenomenal, and, you know, that's just a story we're going to have to tell in March. I mean, does this increase in transportation cost, does it reflect an extra out of, no, this is just pure increase, yeah?
The, what we were given for an out-of-district placement for this year has doubled for next year, and that's tuition, that doesn't include the transportation, which is astronomical. It is just, and in reality, there's no one governing that, right? And I think part of that is, there's, not governing, that's not the right word, they're not supported by like a town budget or a city budget, it's different funding, but also there's so few out-of-district placements, and so even finding a place that has an open spot is really, really challenging. You're looking at a six-to-nine-month wait, and so what happens in the, while you're waiting is that you're then incurring related services or contracted services from an organization who's also astronomical rates to come in and support while we're waiting for the student to be given an opportunity to get their education somewhere else. It's a really complicated process.
So, you know, the expansion that we've been talking about, that's driven, we all have the goal that that's driven in part, in large part, by special needs.
By providing space for intervention and special education services?
Right.
Some of it, yeah.
I don't suppose when that's all done, that that alleviates some of the special needs transportation that we're, I mean, the kids can stay here, no? They have needs that it'd just be on space.
So there's both instances, Paul, there's absolutely, some students need a therapeutic educational experience that we don't provide, that is not a public education, that's not what we do, but there are kids, if we have programmatic space, that we can absolutely provide a FATE for, which is a free, appropriate education, we would absolutely be able to do that if we had space, but right now, we, if a student is having a really, a day that's really hard and they're dysregulated, I don't have anywhere to go with that student to provide an education, except for the classroom.
Right.
And so that's not an option either, because there's 17 other kids, like, it's a really tough balance, and it's, we're super fortunate to have the experts that we have here juggling it all the time, but programmatic space would make a huge difference, because ethically, it is not okay for us to keep a kid here and say we're providing a free and appropriate education when we're not, and that's what's happening if we don't have programmatic space.
In earlier iterations of the building committee, we had talked about that, like, could Stratum be a destination for some of these out-of-district placements?
We talked about even like the whole of SAU elementary schools being, if we housed that programmatic space, if there was a student from Newfields, if there was a student from Exeter, we could have the programmatic space here and be able to service the elementary students of SAU 16.
And that would be revenue source.
Yeah, that's a complicated formula, too.
Is there anything that's not complicated in regards to the budget?
I haven't found it yet.
Especially when it's our kids, right? So, any other questions, any sort of marching orders or things we would like to see in the budget for December?
I guess, based on some, like, my questions, just about like facilities and new furniture and things like that, I would, I would love to see if we were able to cut someone, some of that, how that changes like the overall percentage, just because I think there's a lot there, and as much as I would like to, you know, have new desks and things like that, if that's an opportunity, if we can't cut, you know, in the transportation, in special education, maybe there's some other areas that we can trim up a bit, and that's kind of one of the places I just see a lot coming out of, at least in this budget. So I would be interested to see if that makes some kind of movement for the overall percentage.
Yeah, so just overall, that's about $55,000 in this budget, so we'd be reducing $55,000 if we took out all of the replacement furniture we put in. Just to give you a figure of what, because we talked about that, I brought that up at our last meeting, what we were looking at, because we tried to be cognizant of just a grade level or specific needs, but we can definitely take that out to give you that driver for next meeting.
Okay, does, for that one, sorry, and I know I'm like, keep mentioning new furniture and fixtures, like, there's a couple other ones, software, which is going under 1112, it looks like, right now, that's 1115 for the change?
We have to do that, it's for special education software, for writing IEPs, it's mandated that we buy, it's a new expense, it's 12,000 something.
Okay. What about your change in curriculum assessment and supplies, 1122?
So this past year, we, so we've been using iReady for our math and as well as our assessment, and now we've adopted it as also our reading, and so that's a new expense that will not be going away. I mean, let me rephrase that, you could make that decision, I think. I mean, you could as the board, I just, it's an SAU directive, like, every school is using it so that we can be, it's been really hard to be able to compare data across the school and what experiences the kid, I mean, across the SAU, and now we're all using the same assessment systems and curriculum, it's much easier for us to provide professional learning for our staff, but also then to be able to see where we're growing and where we need to continue to work.
All right, yeah, no, I'm not trying to be a pain.
No, because I think-
I'm just like trying to like, okay, if this change sounds like maybe it's too much, and the officer we're doing the transportation has grown, and there's some concern about what we're, you know, paying per student has gone up, and enrollment's down, like, where's, where can we like break even and kind of like get to that number, if there's any room there, so that's-
I have another question, if I may. Can you tell me what the 295K for maintenance salaries is comprised of, please?
So we have a facilities director, and we have custodians, and then we also have Citywide, because we were unable to fill our custodial positions, so Citywide is an organization that provides for us nighttime custodial services.
Okay, we have a facilities director.
Yep, Tim.
Tim, okay, and then he's full-time here, he's dedicated here.
Yep.
And then, I'm sorry, the next one?
We have two full-time custodians, we used to have four, we have two currently, and then we use Citywide, because we were unable to fill the positions, and Citywide is like an organization that, it's janitorial organization that comes in at night and helps to clean the building.
Oh, it's called Citywide?
Yes, sorry. No, Citywide is the name of the company, and then there's also allotted in there for summer salaries, there are part-time summer employees that work here in the summer to do summer projects.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'm also just thinking about what you said earlier about healthcare, right? And how certain plans are more expensive than other plans? And how does that work? Like, we offer a certain number of plans, and they can choose whatever they want, please?
I believe that's part of the collective bargaining agreement, to what plans they can choose their from, so it would be a process to change that.
Yeah.
Yeah, when we bid it out, we look, Heather will work with it, because there's a number of plans, and typically we offer three to four plans based on that, that have a different variety of what people might be looking for, that's embedded to what they can choose.
Yeah, it seems like there's a big discrepancy in cost, obviously.
Correct.
Yeah.
What's homeless transportation, please?
So for any family that qualifies as unhoused, which there's a process that you have to go, the family has to go through to qualify for that, if they need access to transportation, we pay for their, for the student's transportation to and from school if they're, if they qualify as unhoused, which is called McKinney-Binto.
But there's Stratum residents?
So it's really complicated. So when a family becomes unhoused, educationally, their school of record is the town in which they last lived before they became unhoused, so they might be doubling up with another family in another community, but they last lived in Stratum, and so this is their school of district, and so we provide transportation to wherever they're living now, to school and back, and that's the federal law, we're-
Correct.
It's the law. And in my time here, that number of families has increased substantially.
All right, any other questions or thoughts for Kate?
I guess just returning to the staffing question, like, where do we stand with that? Is this just going to be a question that we'll bring, like, the FAC will bring up again, or like, how are we gonna, yeah, to Tanya's point, too, to all of our points, like, it's hard to sell to the community, the, you know, that this is going to be the new rate, especially after last year, and given that we're going to be asking for a lot of money, so, yeah, do, when would we talk about staffing again, or like, what would next steps on that conversation be?
Yeah, I want to add to that, because I'm thinking of March, so when we get through this expansion, renovation, whatever you want to call it, it doesn't give us a new school, right? It's like a lot of emergency things that need to be done, I think we all recognize that. But we need to fund future repairs and maintenance to the school to a much larger extent, so the point is, we have a heavy lift ahead of us, you know, if I have my way, we're going to have an annual maintenance fund of a couple of hundred thousand dollars, the money goes into that, and it gets used when it's needed for major repairs. You can't, you can't be funding it at, I mean, I'm looking at maintenance funds right now, it's 100 grand, okay, and you're consuming it. And we need to think about these things, or else we're going to have a bond on top of a bond someday. I don't have the answer for it, but that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah. So that increase in the maintenance fee, did that happen this year?
Well, you know, I don't mind asking for it, you know, I'll stand up and take the bullets, but, I mean, it's, you know, it's, we're in this situation because of the kicking the can down the road. It just is, you know, you've got, the school needs to have repairs, it's 35 years old.
It'd be a warrant article anyway, right?
Yeah, yeah, well, I don't, you know, I still don't exactly understand how we would fund the, a maintenance, I think we do it every year, right?
You already have a warrant, it's just the number that you put in there.
It's the number you put in.
But the town would vote on that, though.
Correct.
Right, it's a separate piece, is all I'm saying, so the town can determine, they can decide or not decide.
Molly and I talked a little bit about that, there just is a couple of different ways to do it, and they're all complicated, and they all come with baggage.
Yeah, well, Paul had come, and we had talked about the logistics of the budgeting, and when you put on a warrant article, you have two choices, you can put it from fund balance, meaning at the end of the 24, 25 school year, if you vote in this coming March, if there's money left over, then it would be contributed towards a fund, towards the trust fund, or instead of saying from fund balance, you can raise an appropriate, so it's essentially added in the tax rate.
Do both of them require a vote from the town?
Yes, they both require a vote, it's just how it's funded. If it's funded from fund balance, that way you're not raising additional funds from taxation, you're reducing the amount you give back in the tax rate, but you're not raising additional funds from taxation.
And if there's nothing that is able to be returned, then it's just, it's whatever is left?
Correct.
But it's always up to the maximum, like, you have to send back the maximum, so say we say it's 200,000, we get 135,000 that would be normally returned, that 135,000, by the way the warrant's written, would have to be all of it returned?
If you write up to.
Okay.
And then, or if you want a guarantee that it was going, then you would appropriate the funds.
And also remember, when we do our trust funds, it's the order.
Yeah.
So if we had special ed first, and there was 135, we won 50,000 to go there, then you only go in 85, even though it was said up to 200,000, so that, you have the priority of how you want to put your trust funds at the end of whatever's left over.
And then the board could allocate, though, prior to, or no?
Nope, so it's gonna, it's gonna be the order that it's on the ballot, so when we create the warrant, the order that it's in the warrant, up to would fund each of those. You don't go back and pick and choose.
Think about the public looking at these.
Right, I'm just thinking, every once in a while, there's some flexibility the board appreciates by having the ability to make a decision at the end of the year on something that came up, and we had a balance. If, by the will of the voters, we have to return that money in its entirety, we don't get that flexibility, not saying we need it, but it's, it's a different way of operating than, I think, we probably have in recent years, I can't remember.
You'd still have that, it would be what you have left over by June 30th, Eric, so you could still make decisions up.
So the timing would just matter?
It's just what happens at June 30th, because we can't spend after that, because that's when it's allocated to.
So like to Paul's point, if you put a warrant saying up to $300,000 to the maintenance trust fund, then yes, those decisions that Chris is talking about would be made before that, and then at the end of the day, come June 30th, if there's $300,000, or whatever is remaining, up to 300,000 go in the trust fund.
So your June meeting, you would need to have any information about what you wanted to potentially spend out of remaining funds in the general fund?
We would actually need that by the May meeting, because in order to have it done, you have to have a purchase order open with a contractual obligation.
By June 30th, correct. Thank you.
Wait, I want to make sure I understand that if we put maintenance, if we put money in the maintenance trust fund, are you saying we have to spend it, we can't pile that?
No, 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 what I'm saying is, at the end of the year, if this board PAC I give you says there's $500,000 projected fund balance, before June 30th, the board has the authority to say, I would like to spend 450,000 of that, and then only what's left over on June 30th is your fund balance.
Got it.
So I guess just to ask, like, go back and ask Sophie's question again, which is like, what's the next step in like a staffing conversation?
The board conversation.
Yeah, we just need a direction from you of what you'd like for us to bring, if you'd like us to look at numbers based on what we've got from the 2020 board meeting, we can look at that as projections. You are going to talk educational programming, so we can definitely do that, we just need a direction, do you want us to come back with projected, you know, maybe reductions in staffing? If that's the case, we can do that, we just need to know where you want to go. Right now, I know, we're going to look at taking out all the replacement furniture that we've got into the budget, which is about $55,000. If there's staffing you want us to look at, then we would need to look at that based on where we're at right now, or is that change, you know, in a future meeting?
I would just like to see it. I'd just like to see what the staffing is, contracted, non-contracted, staff numbers for what we're projecting, maybe even for what we have today, or whatever we're projecting for next budget.
We're not projecting any hires at all for next year, so what you have today is what we were proposing for next year, we did not propose any new positions.
And then also versus, I think, the higher, I would like to see it like 19 or 20, like, prior to the pandemic, I don't, the pandemic year was a weird year, so I don't know if that was 19 to 20, or 20 to 21.
Staffing, you mean, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I don't know that we have it, I don't know if you guys have it, Kate, you were here, I think, that was, my first year. I think Heather might have it. We can get it.
We can grab it.
I'm sorry, I would love to see it.
So you'd like to look at the staffing numbers, what we have in this budget, and how it would affect based on student ratio in the classroom? Am I hearing that correctly?
Yes.
Okay.
Compared to what we've seen in the past, what we had prior to COVID.
In terms of classroom teachers, we have the exact same number.
Exact same number.
Yes. And then, actually-
Total headcount, FTE, just across the board.
I'm talking about classroom teachers, I'm not talking about special ed, I'm saying classroom teachers. The only difference would be, at one point, we had a, we had a 99, class with 99 students, and we had six teachers when they were in first grade, second grade, third grade, and fourth grade.
I do think that's an important conversation to have, especially with the building project, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And just to clarify a number, you said last year's change was 4.1?
4.11%.
Okay.
I'll have a little bit of clarification when I talk about the building project.
Okay.
May I help?
Okay. All right, thank you so much for that, hard work, really appreciate it. Last thoughts before we move on.
I, I have one last thought, this must be an agonizing process for you every single year.
I love doing budget.
Why I became an educator, Paul.
I beg your pardon?
I said, I love doing budgets, why I became an educator, Paul.
I did not make a note that we passed the 15 minute mark, but I didn't know if we want to start that again.
I heard the chime go.
Educators in the audience.
Yes.
I don't know if they want to participate in the conversation.
Any conversation or, or public input? Anybody? All right.
I, I have a, I have a question, if I may. You said our MT, our new MTSS coordinator is here.
Multi-tiered system of support coordinator.
I can't say that three times fast. Can we, is she going to speak? I'm sorry to say she.
She's on the agenda.
Okay.
She's on the agenda.
I knew that.
All right, let's get through these board reports and then we're excited to hear. So let's talk about building committee, Paul and Sophie.
Okay, I'll go first.
Yeah.
Okay, so hopefully, we're going to have a simplified contract that we can put signatures to this week. And it's just a matter of making sure the contract is appropriate for the work we're doing right now, which is budgeting and scope. There's no construction work being done. And we had a nice milestone occur this week in as much as Carino came through. Kate headed the, the, the visit. We had them come through with several trades contractors who are potentially going to bid on, on some of the subcontracted work. And I, and I saw an email today, I guess there's another one going to come next week, right?
I'm meeting them on Friday at 6:30 in the morning.
So I know Carino is going pedal to the metal to try to get all of the numbers that they need as solid as possible for us. And they will have it for the subcommittee for the night of December the 12th. I think that's a Thursday. It's the day after the 11th, school board FAC meeting. And that night, the plan is for the subcommittee to scrub all the numbers, okay? To present to the school board the following Wednesday on the 18th. Now, this is what I was saying a moment ago about some clarification. We talked several times about an à la carte menu, okay? Okay, we know we need new boilers, you know, that's, that's kind of like, not really à la carte. But they'll give us several options, okay, on what kind to put in, what the advantages are and what the costs are, okay? And then a lot of things, they've gone through their own, their own scope and they've gone through the Vanwell scope and they're, they're going through the building several times. And they're going to give us an à la carte menu of these are the things that you need to do, these are the things that would be nice to do. And in each of those categories, you're going to get, shall we say, good, better, best. You're going to get a couple of options with a couple of different prices for each. So we're going to have a, a rather substantial matrix to look at. And we can say we want, we want this fixed out of column A, we want that fixed out of column B, we want this fixed out of column C type of thing. And obviously to keep within the cap that we've set. So I talked to Todd a little bit today, he told me about how he's, how he's putting it together. And it's going to be really nice, it's going to be easy for us to take a look at, it should be very clear. So that's how, that's how that's going.
Yeah, that's amazing.
Yeah. Now, that's the good news, okay? The not so good news is, and I'm learning, you know, I'm learning as I'm going here, it seems like you can't touch anything without having to pull everything apart, okay? So every, you know, we're looking at, you know, my hot, my hot button is safety, it always has been. And I would like to see the entire school sprinkled. Well, we're probably going to have to go right back across the street, put in all new pipes, because the pipes are undersized. They're undersized for what's in the school today, okay? And we're going to have to put in a cistern, new pipes, larger diameter pipes. I think they said yesterday that the pump may be okay, all right? Thank God, thank God for little things. But the point is, you know, in our original budget, we're talking about, oh, we can do this for maybe 250 to 500,000 dollars. No, how about a million 250 or a million 500? That's kind of the things that we're looking at, okay? So when you get into one thing, now ADA starts to get important and railings and things like that. So it's almost like you can't touch anything without having to rip everything apart. That's a, that's an exaggeration, but you kind of understand where I'm going with it. So it's a bit of a frustration, but we'll get through it. And we'll, and we'll keep to our budget. Does that help?
Yes, I am very impressed. I look forward to the ease of December 18th.
Can I add one thing to the report? Can I share a little bit about the meeting that we had last week? Met with the team last week and instead of having like one addition that was two stories, they thought it might be a better idea to just have two or more additions that are on the first floor. So I thought that that was an interesting potential adjustment to the original thought of a 10,000 square foot addition, not just being like one chunk of a building with two stories, but maybe two first wing floor.
That was a great idea. Whose idea was it?
Kate?
I think we were all just brainstorming ideas.
Chris, was that your idea?
No, Kate, Kate brought it up, we talked about that. Yeah, that was a great idea.
Brainstorming different options. I have lots of visions. Dreams at this point.
You know, as, as Todd said, it simplifies manufacturing, it simplifies through the build, so cuts cost and so on, so.
I think there are ways to be strategic with restructuring and adding first floor space.
While, while still maintaining this, pretty much the same wall structure.
Bones staying, yeah, bones as is.
Oh, I see.
Bones as is.
Bones as is.
Wouldn't affect the garden or the playgrounds.
Yep.
Yeah. Maybe one over there and one over here or something like that.
Sorry, thank you for capping it, I was not referring to the bones. I was talking about some restructure of larger spaces to medium spaces that doesn't require taking walls down and impacting the fidelity of the building.
Okay. That's great, yeah, thanks to all of you, thank you. And Kate, we recognize time, so thank you.
I'll, I want to add one more thing. So I've, I've talked with a few other people in town and mentioned the name. So generally speaking, a lot of people don't know the name, right? And I'm, I'm continuing to get great feedback. I got an email from a gentleman yesterday. He said, I know Carino. He says, you could not have picked a better firm. So I mean, that was really nice to, really nice to hear.
Good. One of the things I did add to the agenda is just thinking about publicity and public. And I'm wondering if maybe on the 18th, we could talk about that a little bit too? Or come up with a plan? Or I'm just wondering how, how would we start talking about public outreach?
Yeah, I was kind of waiting to see when we would have some general numbers and then kind of go forward from there. Like if we have, like, this is the, this is our plan, right? That we, that we want to sell the town? And then think through how many, you know, public meetings we want to have and presentations and Q and As?
Yeah.
What other forms of communication will be appropriate?
Yeah.
Hint a lot, as many as possible.
Right. Yeah, and definitely like who are we partnering, partnering with? How do we, you know, what media sources?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So could we maybe, could you maybe work something for the 18th and give me some discussion?
Yeah.
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 I think the 18th is going to be a busy night.
Yeah.
You know, we have, we're going to have to make a lot of hard decisions that night with this, this menu.
Sure.
You know, and I am, am hoping that the subcommittee will be here to answer questions and Carino will be here to answer questions. So it could be a long night if you want to include this at the conclusion of it.
Yeah.
Well, I can do my homework and try and make it as straightforward as possible.
And then just something for us to kind of work off of and add, you know, from our own.
Yeah.
All of us have, you know, very unique, you know, social circles or, you know, ideas of communicating. So just at least we get it started. All right, sounds great, thank you so much to the both of you. Superintendent Evaluation Committee. So we're evaluating somebody who is leaving. But I think we thought, we talked about it at the joint board, that it is important in terms of giving, you know, feedback to Chris and to the other leadership team in the SAU to continue evaluating Dr. Asbell. So we laid out a whole sort of calendar of events and times that we need to meet, to do the 360, the in-person with Dr. Asbell. And so our first meeting is going to be January 10th to kind of talk about how that, how that works out. So that's my only update. Things are happening even, even though Esther's leaving. Any questions about that? All right, safety and security.
Yeah, so this is my first meeting, it happened on October 17th. So there was a lot of updates, a lot of updates. So all of the school safety audits were completed for all the schools in the district, including SMS and everything was provided to Homeland Security. And they give you suggestions and improvements basically based off of those audits. Same thing with emergency operation plans, they get submitted to Homeland Security and those are completed and submitted for SMS. The, they talked about the new reunification plan for SAU 16 schools, which is now at Phillips Exeter. And information about that was posted on the SAU website and on Parent Square, I believe, so. I, one thing I had a question for, for Kate on this one was I, at that time, I looked in the like parent handbook for SMS and I didn't see that in there for reunification. Do we post that somewhere?
So we didn't, it didn't, it wasn't published till September 28th of this year and our family handbook goes out in August. But we actually had our first SMS safety committee meeting today. So like Chief King is there, Rich Kane from SAU is there. And we talked about reposting the reunification on Parent Square because it wasn't out when our handbooks went out. We've already posted it, but it was again in our newsletters, so things get missed. So we're just going to put it as its own on Parent Square, we actually had that conversation today.
Perfect, okay, good, awesome. Yeah, so Phillips Exeter, they kind of ran us through it while we were there. It's very easy to follow, there's a lot of signage and things, so they have everything very planned out. So good reunification plan. They talked about schools running tabletop, tabletop exercises to ensure preparedness for variety of emergency situations. A lot of the different schools have been running some of those exercises. I am not sure historically if we've run any here for SMS.
We run one every year, our first one is, I can tell you, is this January, we're doing one. And we're actually going to be doing a reunification, is going to be our tabletop in January. Last year it was a student being kidnapped.
Okay, okay. Let's see, what else do I have? They are doing some training and exercises at the SAU level for cybersecurity. And then the last summary I have for, or the last note I have is that some, they said they had some fire marshals that visited some of the schools in the SAU in order to talk about fire regulations and the ability to chalk doors and things like that and provided some guidance on the topic. And so the SAU is looking to do that like one time a year to make sure schools stay up to date with fire regulations, anything new that's come up and things like that, so.
Ours was last week, we got our report last Thursday. Chucking doors remains a thing that we always get comments about. We actually learned a lot about that, Tim went to a training earlier, I guess it was over the summer maybe. And the reason, so other schools don't, other schools can chuck their doors, it's because we're not sprinkled. So that is, because it was been like a bone of contention, like we're like, this is so frustrating. Rich Kane has been really helpful, he had reached out to the fire marshals for us to be like, why is this different? And it turns out it's because we're not sprinkled and so that is the issue.
And is that a way to like contain a fire at that point then?
Got it.
Is to, yeah, okay. So that's what I have. Do you have anything additional that you wanted to add to that?
I would just say we had our first, so we have quarterly SMS safety meetings and ours was today. It was a great, lasted longer than we anticipated, but we sort of, last time we had met was last spring. So we went over all the things that have changed at SMS since last spring, which was a significant number of safety features that have changed. We reviewed several of our emergency procedures as things change and they need to be updated. So we reviewed those with police there, so we can then, we'll do a, at a staff meeting, we'll review the changes so the staff is fully aware. Reunification was one of those things that we talked quite a bit about. And then, I just want to make sure I missed anything. We continued to talk about our concerns for walkie-talkies. And Rich Kane had some great ideas, so there's some things that we can try there. He's going to come back over and we're going to work through some things together. So it was great conversation, he's going to provide a training. We have new administrative assistant staff and people in new positions. And so a couple of years ago, he provided a training for like, when you answer the phone and it's a blank, what is the expectation and how do you handle it? And so at our last main office meeting, I had asked them if they wanted the training and they were all like, so he's going to come do the training for them, so it'll be good.
All right, that's all, thank you. Thanks to both of you. All right, chair update. I just have a couple of things. I just, I wanted to recognize Chris, Dr. Andrew Kistrski, so thank you. I know you're stepping up into superintendent next year, so that's very exciting. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Do you see this changing or? The hot seat. Who will be our SAU rep?
Thank you, we're working through that. There's a lot, a lot going on.
We need you.
So I'm.
Well, I'm thinking with the building project.
Yeah, so we're, we're going to, a lot of planning out. And then we're going to try and put people in, in the right strengths, but that is still to be determined.
Okay. All right, sounds great. I also just didn't want to have a board meeting without sort of recognizing the Latimer family and, you know, obviously like such an important family to SMS and, you know, someone, you know, a family that we care about so much and has such a background. So anyway, just wanted to recognize them. And also, you know, I saw so many teachers contributing to the fund for them. And, and that was so meaningful to me to see so many of you guys on that fund and really wonderful, so anyway. I also know that we got some bus emails this month. So just following up on all those transportation issues in terms of some of the bus conversations that we've been having. And then my final note is, you know, parent teacher conferences, student-led conferences last, you know, a couple of weeks ago. And I definitely heard good comments about it, even though I'm salty nobody responded to your survey. But I, I think it was a nice combination to have the student-led and also have time. I'm curious to see how it worked out. I know there, in my classroom, there was a little bit of delay, right? A parent talked a little bit longer, but I was just wondering how it went from your perspective.
So I did send out a survey to families today in the newsletter, asking them, based on now having both options, what's your feedback on that? So that did go out to, it was in a newsletter, so you'd have to, we threw it, so who knows? Maybe I'll post it separate if we don't get a lot of response to it. So I talked to quite a few teachers and I think there are things that we would tweak a little bit differently. So one of them was, I think we made this assumption that families would know that if they weren't the ones in there, that they should be waiting in the hallway.
Yeah.
And they didn't. And so then it kind of delayed things or it felt like it wasn't as intimate of a conversation as you would want because the purpose of the adult part is to be talking about things that maybe you don't want everybody else hearing.
Yeah.
Or you don't want the student hearing. So we talked about like how we prep families for better and then make sure there's chairs for them and things like that, just more like logistical stuff. But I did hear from a lot of the staff about it was really nice to have both options.
Okay.
So it was great to see the kids getting to showcase, but then also be able to connect with their families face to face because as you know, most communication is phone or email. So that face to face time is also really helpful to build relationships with our community.
Yeah.
So the feedback was by and large really good.
Okay, good.
We didn't have as many people as we thought that would sign up for the adult part. But people are really busy and maybe now that we've done it once, it'll catch on and they'll choose to do it in the spring.
Yeah, and the spring one is evening, right?
It's going to be half, it's going to start at like noon and go until 6:00, I think, is the hours, that might not be exactly close.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, well, sounds great and thank you for trying new things there. And yeah, I do, I do think that's such an important part of the student experience. Okay, strategic planning, Tanya.
I, I realize my name's on here, but I think Sophie went to strategic.
Oh, I was out of town, so I missed it.
Oh, that's great.
Can you have a quick update?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, so they met for the first time, I'll start now. Obviously I wasn't on the first meeting, but I will start going to meetings, but I did have the opportunity. So the, the committee met, they looked at a bunch of questions that are going to be for staff, students and for community. And just making sure that those, those questions make sense, that the wording is correct, that we're trying to ask for. So they worked with Nick Khan from, from ISABAR, which is a subsidiary of Qualtrics, which is their, their niche is survey. That's who does all your SAT survey and a lot of the surveying for your secondary colleges and starting to work with public education. So Dick is fantastic, he'll be the one that'll be leading us through, with his team, through the strategic planning process. So this part is all virtual. We did have committee members that partnered up and they looked at specific questions. So Dr. Asbell and I got to. So Dr. Asbell and I got to work with the student rep, which was super awesome, to hear her feedback of the questions and how students would respond to what we're asking and gave some really good feedback. So for our next meeting, we'll bring that back, make sure that it's aligned with the intent of the questions that we're asking to get the results that we're asking for when we get to that strategic planning model. So that meeting, I think we have a meeting in two Thursdays coming up. I'll check my calendar, but we have another one very shortly to go over that. It's after our, yeah, it's after our administrative retreat. So in a couple of Thursdays, we'll meet, and that's the second round to review that.
Okay. Sounds great. Eric, policy committee.
Yeah, thank you. So we met as a group and there's a lot here. It's largely around some of the Title IX discrimination stuff. I don't know if anybody has had an opportunity to take a look. I'm happy to answer some questions. What I would say is, there was some good conversation in the group. I'm not sure if everyone is familiar with sort of a contentious, there's some contention right now between the state bill that was signed by Sanunu regarding sports and biological sex and gender in sports versus the federal, I think, I don't know if it was amended or something, but there's some changes to Title IX. So those two are presently at odds. And so what we, we asked in the policy, should we reflect anything? And they said, no, because we don't know yet. Like, let's just play it by ear, see what's happening. And I think the last, I do have, I see people, I don't, do you guys know about this? Have you heard much about this?
No.
Okay. I have a fairly unbiased, I think it's a pretty unbiased news report. Can I read it really quickly?
Sure.
All right. And I'm sorry, because I know we've got people waiting to present. This was from the New Hampshire Bulletin. It says amid fraught landscape school districts react differently to transgender sports ban law. And I think this is good for us just to know and to be aware of the issues, so that if anybody asks and if they ask about, do our policies reflect X, Y, or Z, why we have chosen to do what is proposed here, which is basically to leave it alone until we get better guidance on it. So it says in August, the Kirsarge Regional School Board took up a thorny question, how should it comply with a new law barring transgender girls from middle and high school sports? Earlier that summer, Governor Chris Sanunu had signed the law, House Bill 1205, which required that schools separate their sports teams into male, female, and coed teams, and that they allow only kids who are born biologically female to join female sports teams. Let me preface all of this with what also was said. We don't have any of, anybody that is necessitating a grievance process here at SMS, okay? Because this is, these policies that we're adopting are for SMS specifically. All right. Kirsarge had a student, a transgender girl, who would be barred from playing girls soccer if the school followed the state law. The board was meeting to decide whether the school district should do so. The body held its deliberations behind closed doors in a non-public session, but the final result was clear. Kirsarge would allow the student to play on the team, ignoring the state law. The decision came amid a difficult environment for school districts. The legislature had passed a law requiring them to bar transgender girls from girls sports. The federal law under Title IX of the U.S. Education Amendments prohibits any discrimination on the basis of sex, and school districts that violate the law can lose out on federal funding. And the law was updated this year by the Department of Education to explicitly bar discrimination based on a person's sexual orientation and gender identity. Transgender rights advocates argue that Title IX takes precedent and that schools should follow it over the state law. The Kirsarge Board agreed. But other school districts have chosen to follow the state law and bar their transgender female students from girls' sports, and those districts are currently facing lawsuits. Barrett Kristina, executive director, Christine, I can't ever remember his name, but Madam, of course, as we probably all have, executive director of the New Hampshire School Boards Association, says he agrees with the approach taken by Kirsarge. "It is impossible to comply with both House Bill 1205 and the recent Title IX regulations," he said in an interview. "There's simply no way to comply with both." On August 15th, Plymouth Regional High School informed the mother of Parker Terrell, a transgender girl, that she would not be allowed to play on the soccer team, citing its need to comply with the law. The ACLU of New Hampshire is currently suing Terrell's school district, Pemme Baker Regional School District, in addition to the school board, Department of Education Commissioner Frank Edelblut, and the State Board of Education to stop the law, which they argue is unconstitutional. They also, they are also suing the Pembroke School District to allow Iris Terrell, another transgender student, to participate. U.S. District Court Judge Landia McCafferty has issued a temporary restraining order against the law allowing Terrell to play on her girls' soccer team, but it applies only to Terrell and Terrell and not to all transgender students in the state. For school boards and school districts, the question of whether to comply with HB 1205 is fraught. HB 1205 creates the threat of lawsuits for districts that do not comply. The law states that "any student who has deprived them an athletic opportunity or suffers any direct or indirect harm as a result of a school knowingly violating the law shall have a private cause of action for injunctive relief, damages, and any other relief available under law against the school." So far, no lawsuits have been filed against the only school district currently not following the law, Kirsarge Regional School District. On the other side, Title IX has clear prohibitions against school discrimination, and Kirsarge Board members have raised the concern of the loss of federal revenue if they are found out of compliance by the U.S. Department of Education. The question of whether Title IX's prohibition on sex-based discrimination applies to transgender athletes barred from sports teams is a critical, central point of contention in the federal lawsuit involving Terrell and Terrell. The state's attorney general's office has argued that Title IX was originally created to protect women's sports and that the state law is seeking to do the same by preserving fairness and safety for female athletes by barring transgender girls. Attorneys for Terrell and Terrell argue that both girls have undergone hormonal therapies that have eliminated any physical advantage they might have against other female students. The district court's preliminary decision is likely to be appealed, and the case is moving to a full trial in the coming months, but Kristina said McCafferty's ruling is nonetheless an indication to school districts that they do not need to bar transgender girls from their sports teams. It's sort of a signal to anybody else that's bringing any further challenges that the court's already going to decide that the law itself is unconstitutional, end quote. Beyond the question of compliance with federal law, the Kirsarge Board also received a swell of pressure from transgender advocates, sorry, I'm trying to wrap this up, including the student herself asking for them to allow her onto the soccer team. A number of parents of transgender children across the state, including Sarah Terrell and Michelle Sully Foissy, testified in favor of the move, as did Christine Arsenault, Arsenault, a pediatrician who noted high suicide rates among transgender youth and the benefit of access to sports. Other advocates spoke in opposition, such as Beth and Stephen Scare, who said unfair advantages could follow a decision to allow a transgender girl to participate. The student herself testified that she had played soccer since she was three and benefited personally from the socialization and sense of belonging she received. As the issue continues to feature in political campaign rhetoric, particularly among Republican candidates who oppose transgender girls participating in girls' sports, sports events have become new flashpoints of conflict. A group of Bo parents are suing the school district in federal court because the district barred them from attending sporting events after they wore pink armbands to games in which Bo was facing off against Plymouth. The armbands, which were marked with XX, to signify female chromosomes, were worn in protest of Terrell, who was playing on the Plymouth team. Parents have argued their First Amendment rights have been violated. The school district says the protests were disruptive and constituted harassment. Kristina declined to comment on the Bo schools district handling of that incident, but the school board's association has a template policy around free speech issues that encourages school boards to adopt. Quote, "No person on school property or during any school-sponsored or approved activity may engage in behaviors that are harassing or discriminatory in nature based on a person's actual or perceived age, sex, gender identity, sexual orientation, marital status, familial status, disability, religion, national origin, race, or color," end quote, the sample policy states. Thank you for bearing with me with that long thing, but I wanted everybody to be aware and to understand sort of what the conversation was in our policy committee about that. And I thought that that article did a really good job of explaining point, counterpoint, and sort of where the state's at. And I actually think there was, there have been teams also that have forfeited their games recently, but this was, I think, a September article. So it's, this is fairly recent. And I couldn't find anything else saying that any of those lawsuits had moved forward or had been determinative in any way. So that's why it's not really included here. Again, there's nothing related to SMS yet. And of course, many of our sporting events are handled actually by the town through the rec department.
Right.
So I don't know, you know, what implications there would be there. But we often have people in the community ask us about these things when they hear it, so I thought it might be beneficial for folks on the board to know what the issues were.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yep. And I'll just offer one more on, if you skip down to public access to school district records. That was one where we have to, we have to incur cost expense when providing, what's it called?
Right to know.
Right to know, right. So it's kind of like a FOIA, right to know. So when somebody asks us for any kind of information that we have that's public in nature, we have to do that. If there are things that need to be redacted, it's pretty labor-intensive and it requires sometimes going to outside. So what the note here was that this amendment allows us to, a reasonable charge for those services. One of the things that we had suggested in the policy committee was, why don't we see if we can provide people with an estimate of that first? So if somebody gives us a right to know and it's going to turn out to be $2,000 worth of work, before we do all this work and then hand them a bill for $2,000 and they say, I don't want to do it, never mind, then we've already incurred a lot of time and expense. There's some back and forth that could happen there. And so we said, if we could, there's a lot of things that we have, like e-discovery and things like that, that are within our own systems, where we can look for expressions or whatever it is within email correspondence or other, we could perhaps give somebody who's asking their right to know an anticipated cost of what that might be and see if they're still willing to move forward with it. So it had just been so labor-intensive in the past and we thought, maybe there's some better ways to do that. Because we want to be transparent, we want to provide answers on right to know, but we also don't want people to use that as a tool to cripple us from a labor and fees perspective as well. So anyway, I don't know if you guys want to do a first read, if you want to just adopt them, but that was the update from the policy committee.
That's great. Thank you so much. What's your recommendation?
I mean, my recommendation, I didn't have any problems with any of it. There were a few little typos that I think people had suggested, and I think those have been, I think those have been fixed. There was one about hair, because it was just a lack of knowledge within the committee members, that it was just something having to do with types of hair that could be considered or the ways of even adorning your hair or presenting your hair was one of the things. And so that was the only thing that just, I think, included a little bit more conversation in the committee about what does that mean and was that a typo or was that truly the way that that was meant to be read? And that was the, that was the answer to that one. So I mean, I felt comfortable with the way that they were presented. They are all, as with almost all of these, they are to come into compliance with RSA. And I think we've, I think we've done that.
Anybody have any questions on any of the policies? Anybody? I guess I would entertain a motion to adopt, unless anybody has any concerns.
Well, I would move, I would make the motion to adopt.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just didn't really get to read it as closely as I wanted to, but if I, that's on me for not realizing that it would be so lengthy. So I'm happy to adopt on your recommendation. Just wanted to say that in case anybody else felt like that.
Are you saying 581 AC?
Yeah. I skimmed it, but I just didn't have all of them.
Oh, all of them. Okay. So would you rather just have it be a first read?
Um, I wouldn't be opposed to it if other people wanted a second read too, but we've got a lot going on, so I'm also happy to just adopt and take your recommendation.
I'm okay on the second read, too. Like, I'm happy to vote against the motion. Whatever you want to do, Sophie.
I mean, do other.
It's a lot.
I'm not opposed to that. I did, I did read it, so I can go either way. But if you need time, then I'm happy to.
Let's go for it.
Okay. So did I get a second? I think I did.
Paul.
Okay, Paul. All right. All in favor?
Hi.
Anybody opposed? All right, 500.
Thank you.
All right. Yay. Multi-tiered system of support.
Yeah, see you later.
Do we want to do six to you while she's doing that?
Yeah, that'd be great. So in your packet, I sent you just a letter. I don't have that.
Oh, it was in our packet?
I didn't see anything about hair.
I didn't see it.
I was just searching the word hair.
I'll find it for you.
Just, I sent you an email, just a retirement letter. I don't think there's much to discuss with it, other than, you know, just the years of service that the employee has given to the Stratton Memorial School District. And it is coming up, it is during the school year, but, so I just didn't know if there was any questions or if you wanted to say anything publicly.
I'm so sorry. Can you tell, like, when?
Yeah, November 6th, 8:13 PM.
Oh, got it. Okay. Yep. All right, I'm with you.
Yeah, so this is, you said this is, yeah, happening during the school year.
Yep, it will happen.
Yeah.
February 21st will be the last day.
Yeah, why that day?
Just the time of the years of service they've got. I don't know if Kate's had additional conversations with that employee, but we've had a couple that this is, you know, we've had one coming up soon with another employee that's coming up, I think, December 13th.
Okay. What grade level?
Works with multiple grade levels, right?
Works with first grade right now. Are you able to fill that position?
We have one open right now that we're working on. And we will, I mean, the post actually remains open most of the time, but we will ask, so I can call Diana's central office and she'll like put the top of all that postings as we get closer, and that does help.
Hi, I'm Brianna Martin. I am the MTSS coordinator. I did run into someone new recently and we were talking, and he said, oh, my wife works in schools, too. And I said, what do you, what does she do? And he said, well, she used to be a teacher and now she does something with letters. And I'm like, I bet she does what I do. So MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support. And thank you for having me. I'm really excited to talk about what we've been doing here and our goals for what's to come. I think some of what is in this presentation will hopefully answer some of the questions that came up earlier in the board meeting conversation, or at least speak to that a little bit. As I go, just pause me along the way if you have any questions or anything.
I'm just going to jump in. Sorry, guys. There's a lot here, so we will share this with you as well, so that when you're processing, not tonight, the information is available to you.
I get really excited about what I do, so it's hard for me not to put it all out there. But I think I was able to prioritize kind of most key information to start with, and then there's some supplemental slides separated out at the end for you. So one of the pieces that we wanted to share is what my job is looking like. And thinking about, listening to Paul today, talking about work on the building committee, and thinking about hiring Carino as the contractor. In a lot of ways, I think of myself kind of as the contractor, that if, in a system contractor that if, in a system where you may have the best plumbers, electricians, carpenters in the world, but if there's not someone to do some organization in coordination, it can be really hard to get a project done efficiently. So coordination is a lot of what I do. I am the 504 Coordinator. There are about, about 50 students at SMS right now with current 504 plans. We've had 22 meetings so far this school year. I coordinate the child study team. We have about 80 students with current CST files. So I've had 67 meetings for that so far as of 11-1. We've had some more since then. Looking at our data collection, our progress monitoring, and then serving on a number of committees and also providing some direct student support. Right now I give about an hour a day of direct student support. My background is in both regular and special education. So that's something where I'm able to step in as needed. Looking ahead at what I really would love to see expanded in the future is additional work around community engagement and professional development. I love working with communities. I love working with families. We'll have the best results if we're incorporating our community members and results-driven work is really important to us. And then in around PD, there's a component of, my goal is eventually to get to do a lot of accessibility coaching. So really being able to look with teachers at, say I have, say I'm a classroom teacher with three IEPs, three kiddos with IEPs, five kiddos who are getting this kind of intervention, that how do we look at all of their plans and all of the accommodations that they're getting and find what the crossover is so that it's not making plans for 15 different students, but making a plan that will address the needs of all 15 of those students. So really that's, I kind of defined the purpose there. I'm looking at efficiency. I'm looking at expertise, getting everyone there who needs to be present. I think one key piece with understanding MTSS is that I'll have a lot of points around kind of why it's the best thing for students, but it's also a tight MTSS system is a financially responsible school system in that we're able to really maximize the use of personnel and you don't see a system with a loose, or a school with a loose MTSS system is significantly like more likely to have more special education expenses just because we're not able to support as many of the kiddos as need that support along the way. And they're more likely to end up getting referred for special education. So that's an area that we can contribute as well. So we took a sample group of students. We're trying to think about how do we show the overlaps of need and why it's important to have someone coordinating those different support services. And I just want you to take a minute and think, okay, in this sample size where we have of, of a group of students, we have 12 who need support with peer relationships, eight with social emotional learning, four with academics, six with physical regulation, two with medical supports, and eight needing support around family services. So if you want to guess just to yourself what you think the sample size that we used might be, and just take a minute and then we can switch to the next, but kind of have a picture in mind, how many students do you think that was?
Twelve.
You're stealing my thunder. That was a single class of 15 students. So as we look at the data within that classroom, we can see that we have two students who have areas of need in five different areas. The number of students, four, you know, it breaks it down on the side. The point being that for that classroom teacher who's supporting those students, it's one thing for her to, or him, for that classroom teacher to be supporting in the classroom. It's a whole nother thing to be coordinating all of the different service providers, making sure everyone, you know, thinking about if a student has needs in multiple areas, we're going to be able to address those needs most efficiently through a holistic conversation than everybody doing their own thing and hoping that we align. That is just too much for a classroom teacher to coordinate. At SMS, we have an understanding of MTSS as a flexible framework. So what you see up in front of you is the traditional model and the tiered model, that's multi-tiered, where we have at our, our tier one, the general core instruction. Tier two, it's going to be a more targeted or strategic intervention. And tier three, intensive support. So that's kind of the classic MTSS model. We know that all students, regardless of if they need supplemental instruction or specialized instruction, are accessing the tiered one instruction. And if they're not making expected gains, our supports increase in intensity. At SMS, we use a model that has the same founding principles of strong universal instruction, collection and analysis of data and target instruction at increasing levels of intensity. However, if you can see with the model that we're using, it's significantly more fluid and responsive. So it allows us to meet students where they are at a given moment in time rather than having them kind of get stuck in a set level. And within, actually I'll go to my next slide, but we're thinking of it as a gradient rather than those set supports. So kids can move in and around, they can get services in all areas of that pyramid at any one point in time. Oh, can you go back for me? Sorry, I'm trying to get through as much as I can, but I still have more to say about that one. One thing that's really important to understand, and you all may have background in universal design for learning already, but it's really one of the key pieces of what we're trying to bring into or emphasize. It's a, it's a practice here, but we're trying to continue to feed and build that. And when we're teaching with universal design for learning, we're providing students with multiple means of engagement. So we're connecting with them in different ways, representation, which is how we're communicating the information, action and expression. So giving them choice in how they are, and a variety of options in how they're communicating what they have learned. And what you see in that image there, I highlighted universal design for learning. That's something that happens at all levels of instruction. And really the goal of UDL is to identify and remove barriers for learning so that every environment is as accessible as possible for all students. And what's great about that is there were a couple awesome pieces. One of them is that often the accommodations that are necessary for some students that we start building in as a universal practice are really helpful to everybody. So there's that great benefit there. And then also we're often able to address needs and support learning in a less restrictive environment. Again, looking at more efficiency in terms of that learning that's happening in the classroom environment or maybe in an intervention. So just a quick slide on some of the UDL accommodation or UDL pieces that you might see at our school. We have our classroom FM systems, which the feedback from teachers on that has been universally positive in terms of supporting students with attention, auditory processing, all those pieces. Tools and spaces for self-regulation. It doesn't need to just be for that kiddo who has a lot of struggles with regulation. Almost every kid in that class is going to benefit at some point from maybe taking a space and like sit in that quiet corner or use that fidget. Visual schedules, visual supports, those are a big anchor for the majority of learning profiles, whether or not there's a significant difficult barrier to learning. So incorporating those pieces with certain kids in mind, it ends up supporting everyone. And then also seating options because it doesn't matter which chair you're in as long as you're learning, right? And then there's just a little reference about UDL versus accommodations that you can look at in your own time if you like. Our major components of MTSS are our universal instruction, that core instruction that everyone is getting and legally entitled to, our gradient supports. And we have adjusted our schedule this year. You may have seen the new schedule where within each, within both literacy and math, there's a secondary period called after the core instruction called the gradient support block where we're providing, if a student maybe has specialized instruction in that area, they can have that during that time. If they have an intervention in that area, they can have it at that time. But also within the classroom, the classroom teacher and ESP are providing small group, sort of, I guess, really student-focused work for what's appropriate for the students in that room at that time. So all students are benefiting from that gradient support time. We have our child study team where we get together, if a child is having any kind of difficulty or not making the gains that we'd expect, we get together, people who have expertise in relative, relevant areas, set a goal, figure, or figure out what's going on, come up with a plan, set a measurable goal, and then make a plan to reconvene and make sure what we think is going to work is actually working for them. There's extended learning, which again can be happening during that gradient support block where we're looking at, okay, this student may have developed mastery in the skill that's being taught in the classroom right now. What's the next step for them? And then we have our interventions, which are a component of gradient supports available based on data. So we're looking at our benchmark data, we're looking at our progress monitoring data, determining who would be eligible for those supports, getting a lot of classroom teacher input and classroom data in there as well. And then kind of a special piece within that, the components of MTSS is that specialized instruction, which that's Raymond's world. I won't touch it in this presentation, but I think, again, understanding that when all of the other pieces are really tight and really strongly in place, we can make sure that the specialized instruction and the funding that goes along with that is reserved for students who, who have educational disabilities that require specialized instruction. So our different areas that we touch on through MTSS, it's not just the traditional academics because we find especially in elementary schools, there can be a lot of barriers to learning or aspects that need fine tuning that aren't specific to the content area, right? So we have literacy supports and math supports, but we also have wonderful teams of related service providers, our speech and language pathologists, our occupational therapists, our social emotional service providers are all working with students as well to provide short-term intervention or a whole variety of different types of supports for classrooms and students. Just looking at our, this is our fall, our like, right after the fall benchmark, start of the academic intervention planning. So it's going to look really different as the school year goes on, especially in kindergarten. The way we're responding to students in kindergarten, knowing that there's a huge variety of backgrounds that they may bring in terms of school exposure, it's going to be mostly in-class support. So when you don't see, especially for math, seeing that all that support is pushed in and there aren't specific students identified, that's just what's developmentally appropriate for kindergarten. But that'll give you a sense of by grade level, our literacy participation and our math participation for academic interventions. And already, as we get close to the end of our first round of interventions, we're having some students who are moving out of intervention because they met those expected gains, other students coming in. So those numbers are continuously shifting. In terms of our related services, we have 40 students who have some level of support from occupational therapy. And that can be consultation with the classroom teacher or direct support. We have 12 students in speech and that's kind of expected that those numbers go down as you get into the higher grades because a lot of what a speech intervention would look like typically in those lower grades is going to be articulation. And that's something that we're generally going to age out of. And then our social emotional services numbers are, I found them staggering. 221 students are receiving some level of support from social emotional services. And that could be anything from participation. I think it's important to understand that that could be anything from participation in a lunch bunch to receiving one-on-one counseling. But we have to understand as we're thinking about, I know one thing, Kate, you talked about with school being a little bit different now than it has been in previous years and the impact of COVID. My understanding is that the general, the general thought amongst educators in terms of long-term impacts of COVID is that we have about a 10-year cycle to work through. And I think when you see, looking specifically at our high, high levels in that third and fourth grade for receiving social emotional services, those are our kiddos who were in K and one during the school shutdown period. We think of those as our years for, where the most work is social. So there's a lot of work that we need to be doing with these students now in order to help them develop skills that often would have been developed, that in a typical, typical time period probably would have been developed through school exposure. So just to give you a rundown of the year so far, kind of what our cycle has looked like, in August and September, we had certain students who at the end of the year last year, based off of their end of year data, we thought, let's start working with them right away in intervention. So some students began intervention right away. Students who had a CST file, that was communicated to their teachers. If we needed to meet to start the year to make sure the kiddo started on the right foot, that happened. And then we had our first real round of CST meetings where our teachers could bring kids they had question marks about or just kids that we thought, let's like make sure the whole team is there to make sure they get what they need. And our classroom teachers did an incredible job building community, learning about their students. And they also started collecting some observational and formative data that could be a part of our data, bigger data conversations. The next step was the fall benchmark assessments. Those were in end of September into October. And you can see the, by year, there's a little bit of a difference in terms of which assessments are administered to which grade. Kindergarten has some specialized assessments. The VMI is visual motor integration. So that's looking at those fine motor skills. Are they going to need some OT support there? The BAME is looking at speech development. So after all of those benchmark assessments were conducted, our grade level teams met with our data team to analyze the results and make plans for intervention. And we also take a look at, I think there's that individual picture and then the grade level picture. So understanding that sometimes the data is telling us, oh, there's a whole skill set that this is not specific to a student, this skill needs universal support. And that was the case for one of our grade levels with a particular area of mathematics where we thought, we need to start the year emphasizing fractions, just getting really solid, because we can see that that's an area where they might not yet be ready for the grade level curriculum and we want to get them caught up. So again, it's about that efficiency piece and making sure we're maintaining both the individual and global perspective. And so now we are in our first round of gradient supports, just getting ready to wrap up. Our classroom teachers are using their data that they're collecting, they're meeting regularly with our math and literacy specialists, analyze that data and plan their gradient support blocks. So when other students are leaving for intervention, they're making sure the students who are remaining in the classroom are getting what they need based off of that data. And then our eligible students are receiving that targeted intervention. We have literacy interventions taught by our literacy interventionists and specialists, and they meet four times a week. Our math interventions are taught by our math interventionists or the math coach, and they meet three times a week. And all of our interventions are directed by measurable goals and regular progress monitoring because the last thing that we want to do is waste a student's time on something that isn't working. It has to be effective and we have to have data to support that efficacy. That's our responsibility to the kiddos. So right now, as that first intervention cycle concludes, our child study teams are getting ready to meet again to review student progress and make some adjustments. Right now it looks like I have about 50 kids that we're going to touch base on toward the end of November, beginning of December and make sure that the progress that we're expecting has been happening. And if not, things need to be tailored and adjusted. Some students for whom questions about progress have arisen will be added to that roster. And some students who have what we call a tailored support plan, which outlines their supports, their goals, and how we expect that to be implemented. If they're consistently making that expected growth, they might have their plan paused, which is always an exciting moment. So really, I love data. And it's not because I'm a numbers person. I was never a math person, but for me, the data is so meaningful in terms of how we're directing what we're doing for our children. And on the student level, we're getting that, what does this specific child need? But then with overall trends, again, kind of looking at that, what is a universal piece? What's something that's going really well in our instruction that we want to preserve? What's something that like, oh, okay, this skill set is an area that we need to learn to kind of approach in a different way next year because our grade level has some deficits in that area? Really trying to be thoughtful about both the individual and large picture of what that data is sharing with us. And in terms of our vision for next steps, one of the goals of the framework team has been to develop a whole child learner profile that really gives us a sense of longitudinal progress for a child consistently over time in a, I think, more user-friendly way. Right now we have a lot of great data, but it's kind of in a lot of different places. So being able to, for me as a new, if I were a new service provider, working with a student, being able to really understand their history of learning growth, what kind of supports they've received in the past, what's worked well for them, that's kind of our vision for next steps. So you can see within, looking at the SMS gradient support process, that whole child learner profile, we've got the tailored support plan, we've got the monitoring, that whole child learner profile is something that we're looking at making a more, I think, detailed and, I don't want to use the word coherent, because I don't think what we have is incoherent, but just kind of a more clear snapshot rather than a messy collage, if that makes sense. This is my wrap-up. Yeah, I can, I can stop. I really just think it's important when we're talking about MTSS to understand the different levels of impact, especially when we're getting ready to communicate about it with our community. That on that individual level, we have students whose needs are met holistically and intentionally, their barriers to learning are removed, their learning targets are set and achieved. That just feels like the right thing to do, right? But then also school-wide, there's a huge benefit to our classrooms and our school communities because we have increased learner regulation overall, which we know when one kiddo is dysregulated in the classroom, that's going to be harder for the other kids in the room, right? We have increased participation. Folks who might not have been able to access learning or access a path to communicating about their learning are now able to share. And we're all learning from each other in that way. And then we also have the opportunity for really looking at extended learning in this flexible system because we're trying to meet every student's needs. So that could be someone who really needs very specialized instruction and support. That could be someone That could be someone for whom the grade level curriculum maybe is less appropriate because they're ready to move on to other things. And I think the key piece is understanding that learners who graduate from this kind of a system where everyone's needs are met and they're able to learn and they're able to contribute and be part of their community, they graduate with the skills and understandings needed to contribute to their local communities and support their own well-being. We know kids who receive this kind of effective education are also going to be physically healthier. There's a strong correlation with that. And being able to support the well-being of others around them. So it's really, I think, an individual mission as well as a community-based one. And I am excited, I think for me, I'm very excited for the work that we're doing individually with students. And I'm also very excited for being able to support these students in becoming, in increasing their engagement and participation in the STRATIM community. And then there are more slides, but I won't throw them at you now. Does anyone have any?
Thank you so much.
Of course. Any questions or anything I can clarify?
I have a question.
Yes.
First of all, I want to say that was impressive.
Oh, thank you.
I want to go here.
My kids say that all the time.
The question I have is you made the statement that as a result of COVID, educators conclude that kids, students are affected for 10 years? It's a 10-year cycle?
That's my understanding.
First graders are going to be affected all the way through 10th grade, pretty much their entire grade school.
Well, and I think you can't think of it as, again, this is not my, well, to be clear, this is not my area of expertise, but in trainings and professional development that I've done around this with neurologists, neuropsychologists, that's been kind of the projection is like 10 years to normalcy because it was a traumatic event in a formative age. So it doesn't, and I don't love the word normalcy, but 10 years toward, I guess, repair. But as we look at that 10 years, it's not, it's not, I'm here now and I'm here in 10 years and there's no growth in between. It's just going to be, anytime we have development of children, it's going to be a gradual progression. So there are going to be skills that are going to be woven in in different time periods and learning habits that are going to be woven in at different time habits or times of development as they grow.
As this is a K through 5, that, the effect of COVID washes out in five, in five years. Because those kids, the kids get older, they're moving on and they're in middle school and high school.
What do you mean by washes out?
What I mean is that the children that were affected when they, as they were going into kindergarten, right? They go through the schools, this school, and go into higher grades. But the kids that come in after that, they were never in school, so.
And I think if we look at it just as the school-based, then that's very true. However, I feel like, you know, from having friends who had babies during the main shutdowns, that was a real shift in experience from birth on. So I think that we're really expecting, from feedback I've heard from our kindergarten teachers is that they're starting to feel more like they were pre-COVID, just in terms of kids coming in at a similar place of development.
Can I just jump in really quickly? I think that it is a myriad of factors that we're talking about. And when I say that, there's no question the implications that COVID has had for, for our children. It's also how the family and the community weathered COVID, right? So like, it's hard because a lot of it is like national studies. When regionally, it was handled very differently in different parts of the country. It was handled very differently in different communities within the seacoast. So I think it's really hard, like we know in terms of like, generally speaking, that's what they're talking about in terms of student development, child development. But I also, like, some families experience that as a very traumatic thing. And so their family is still bearing and working through that trauma. Other families, it wasn't traumatic at all in the sense of like, they were well-adjusted. They didn't really impact them, they still had their work, whatever it was. And so they weathered it differently. And so their child's experience was very different. Like, we know that trauma is like generational, right? So I just think that there are so many factors that play into that. But there's no question that we're already, this year's kindergarten is experiencing school, what I would think was like pre-COVID typical behaviors, for the most part.
And having been here, because I have been at STRATIM for, I think this is my sixth or seventh year now, first in special education, having been here through the shutdown of schools up until now, I feel that every year, every grade level has kind of had their own flavor, where we're like, oh, okay, this, and, and just kind of understanding like, oh, this was probably, these are the kiddos for whom school was shut down in third grade. This is a skill set that we tend to develop, especially socially, emotionally during third grade. So this is where we need to provide intervention and support. Each year has kind of had its own trends. That it's, at first, I think we found ourselves thinking like, huh, it's really interesting that everyone, or not everyone, that there are so many kids in this particular grade level who are working on this particular skill. And then it's like, oh, no, that just, it makes sense within the context of what we're moving through. And we just need to be prepared to support them.
Okay, what I was, what I was trying, what I was thinking you were going to say, because I was, that was a little bit of a bait, okay? But I think you did acknowledge it. When the kids come in, the children that were not in school when COVID hit, these were two-years-old, one-years-old, two-years-old, three-years-old, right? They all experienced COVID as well. So they're coming into the school with that effect, even though they weren't in school.
Absolutely.
And then little at a time, as the years go by, as kids come into the school, you're seeing the effects of COVID less and less.
That's what we hope. But again, I mean, MTSS as a system was best practices long before COVID in terms of supporting student needs.
I was just going to say, Paul, if you think about like the kids who are two and three, who, and everybody's wearing a mask.
Speech development.
Speech development, like, big time. So not even just like the dysregulation functions, but like.
Yeah, it makes sense.
Gross motor, fine motor, there was lots of.
So it'll, so that's, I think, the 10-year, right? So you're talking about a kid who's basically like an infant up to fifth grade. That's the whole 10-year kind of window.
And I think it's just, also it's part of like lack of experience or altered experiences that were atypical of what we had experienced for 50 years, right? So there's all those pieces that play into it. It's not just simply that they weren't in school. They weren't doing a lot of things that they would have been doing at three-years-old or four-years-old. And so I think it's a, their life experiences were dramatically different. And so their skills developed very differently or were stunted because of it, if we want to like kind of refer to that, like they just need more time to develop them. And there's, yeah, I, there's a lot of research about it. But I think it's going to be, you know, another, I think it'll be a long time before we have a really clear picture. I think it's just, we're so soon after it that I don't know we're going to have longitudinal data to sort of talk about the larger picture.
Yeah, that 10-year idea is just a projection.
I had a question about just students who are performing at above grade level. Like, a lot of what I saw was kind of about maybe deficits or things like that. Is, do you also do MTSS coordinating for the students who are performing at above grade level?
That is the ultimate goal. That's something that's starting to happen. It is not, I don't think that, so something like a child study meeting, a study team meeting, for example, would be most likely to be convened if there was a question or concern that we felt like we weren't already adequately able to address. And that multiple areas of expertise were involved. So I think typically, when we're looking at extensions for students who need that more, you know, maybe next-level learning, that's going to be something that is going to be able to be provided through a small, like often the classroom teacher or a specialist working directly together, but not necessarily requiring something like then OT involvement to support fine motor, you know, those pieces. But it would really depend upon the student.
I think, well, we can give you an example. The fifth-grade team was just looking at data and opposed to our math coach. And they have 15 kids that are ready for, they're just ready to go much deeper with the curriculum as it currently is, where they currently are in their fifth-grade progressions. And so they had reached out to the math coach and said like, during our gradient support block, which is where that is, you can really personalize it, is it possible for the math coach to be looking at, is 14 or 15, yeah, to provide extension for those students? So it's not as systemic as the intervention piece is right now. But it is part of why, last year when we talked about MTSS coordinating, was part of that reason is that we needed to be able to have the data to support that and then build the structures and the systems in place to be able to provide that. And that's, this is, that would be an example of what we're doing right now. In the past, it would have been more like an individual student. Like, we've had several individual students on extension plans, but not sort of on the scale of 15 kids within a grade level where they're going to get an exposure to something like that.
You mentioned extension in there, like, two or three, that's what that means, right?
Yes.
Extension, extended learning.
And moving them even further along.
On the, if, when you think about the student's progress report, so there's like developing proficient and extended, extended is that. It is like beyond the typical grade level standards or competencies. It is really like the kid is ready for something that is atypical of the developmental process or the progressions in the curriculum.
Yeah, I just had a question about, you know, these CST teams and all the meetings you're going to. And I instantly think like, oh, my kid's teacher is getting pulled from that classroom 67 times or however many. I understand that's not just one class, but how, how does that work with teachers being pulled from the classrooms to be on these teams?
That's a great question. And I think very, while I may have met on 40, well, I may have had 67 meetings, it would be on a pretty broad variety of students. So typically, it's not one classroom teacher being pulled many, many times. However, we do try to be really thoughtful in scheduling. And we also have set cycles where rather, I think what has been most effective for us is looking at, okay, every, we're going to meet every six to eight weeks. And this is our cycle, and you know, we built our schedule at the start of the year. Sometimes things change a bit, but generally, you know, okay, December 12th, I probably will have a chunk of meetings. And then again, eight weeks later, I will probably have a chunk of meetings. The meetings themselves, for something like a CST, a 504 meeting, I give as much time as they need, but it's more of a 45-minute to an hour-long meeting. The CST meetings that classroom teachers are coming to, one thing that you'll get at the end, or when you look over the slides yourself, there's an overview of the problem-solving process that we use, which is called TIPS. And it takes about 15 to 20 minutes per student. So we try to make that a really efficient time. One of the pieces that I try to do to support that is making sure classroom teacher times are blocked, so they're not coming in and out regularly. And also to try to have as much data and information prepared within the tailored support plan as possible. So we're really able, we're not spending our time sitting there inputting data. We're analyzing what we have, coming up with a very precise problem, and then brainstorming solutions to come up with goals. But I, I was a classroom teacher for a number of years and then special ed after that. And I really did not like missing my students for anything. So I try to be really respectful of that.
Sounds good.
Problem. I think if we're, I mean, right, the number of meetings that are required for any, any person in this building, regardless of the role that they fill. And I think we're constantly trying to be as strategic as possible and think out of the box. And how do we use staff meetings or how do we use in-service days or like ways to do that? And hours are limited, right? Like, there isn't, and in addition, there are a variety of things that impact scheduling already. So there's, you know, like, we have sacred parts of the day that we refuse to pull teachers from. Like, this is, that's where core instruction comes, so a teacher won't be pulled from that time. But that means that there's other times that they're going to need to be pulled. There is not a simple answer. But I do think when we, there's six of us that were trained in the TIPS process. And part of that is to be really specific and tight with the meetings so the teachers can be in the classroom more often.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Is there any kind of calculation of how much time teachers are in meetings and how much they're in the classroom?
I don't have that information. I think it would vary significantly depending on the teacher in classroom. And that if we had a teacher who, typically in a situation where there was a teacher with a very high-need classroom, that would be a teacher with some significant support systems in place as well.
I think it's something that other schools or other SAUs tackle in terms of like, so I've worked in places where like every Wednesday is a late arrival and then you can have meetings and you're not interrupting instruction. It's still lack of instructional time, but it's not the kids sitting in the, you know what I mean? Like, there's that idea. And there isn't this back and forth all the time from people being pulled. It's like, this is dedicated to that or this is dedicated to the professional learning. Because it is, it's a concern. I know other districts have gone to a longer day. So they have kids from like 8:00 to 3:00, every teacher stays until 4:30 and meetings are after school. All things that would be negotiated in your CBA, but there are, every district is facing exactly what you're talking about. We have PLCs every week, which is like a professional learning community, which is absolutely necessary if we're going to grow our practice and examine student work. But again, it's like trying to find the times that don't impact direct instruction. So I think it's a constant, like give and take of like, what's the high leverage? What's going to be the biggest bang for our buck in terms of supporting our students?
Yeah. Well, I appreciate that.
I was just going to ask one more anyway. Is on the, you said that you were going to try to, I think, put that data into maybe a different way of looking at it or something like that. Does that require any additional, do you guys already have everything that you need for that? Or are we talking about like spreadsheets?
Built it.
Well, I built a lot, but then I think there's also some conversation where the Department of Education right now around, and Dr. Andruski, you could speak to this probably better than I could, about providing access to some data organization software. But currently, that was, I spent my August enjoying the air conditioning out in the cottage and entering SAS data from the last three years for students, so.
We talked about it at the elementary principal level because the state has purchased a software for, that schools can use for five years for free. And then districts will have to pick it up. But we've, we have lots of questions about where is that data stored? Does that mean the data belongs to who? Is it, there are lots of questions that still need to be answered. And Jill, as your curriculum coordinator, has been attending a variety of different meetings at the DOE and workshops and trainings to learn more about it. And she'll, she's been meeting with the elementary principals to talk about it.
Yeah, very important how you share that data and how you can visualize it, how you can utilize it and all that stuff.
We've done some, I'm, next month is our data presentation. And I'm going to be able to share with you, I want to scrub it clean of names and stuff like that, show you the things that we've put in place and we've built to create a much clearer longitudinal picture of our students.
And I think as we're working and building that, continuing to gather classroom teacher input of, what would you like, what do you feel like has been missing in terms of being able to know what you need to know about your students before the school year even begins? And certainly, our students are more than their testing data, but having a history of the kinds of supports that they've been receiving and how, how testing and other data collection have traditionally gone for them can really help a teacher be prepared to meet those students' needs right away.
Can I ask one more? Sorry. So you had mentioned like somebody had like the thing about the fractions. So how, she said there's monitoring in place and then there's, sorry, I'm just a hungry head. So there's monitoring in place and then somehow you would be alerted that somebody's got this. Could you just walk through like what a real practical example of that would look like for that kid? And then are you interacting with the classroom teacher? Or are you bringing in interventionists as a combination? Like, how does that work?
So when we're doing, we do three sets of benchmark data a year. And after we're doing that benchmark data, we're looking at it as a student level, but also what is our universal proficiency rate per grade level? We're meeting with grade level teams. So I might have a student, so the, like the fractions unit, that was more of, okay, we looked at our universal data and a lot of our incoming fourth graders weren't where we expected them to be in terms of fractions understanding. And we knew we couldn't jump into the fourth grade curriculum without providing some foundational work there first. So that was data that was collected through assessments, analyzed with the math coach and math team, and then shared as a grade level with that classroom grade level to give us, them a sense of where their existing proficiency were, areas of proficiency were, and where they need to kind of lean in and start before moving forward.
And I think there's pieces to that. So one of the things that we've been able to do through the MTS system is we now can triangulate multiple points around the same area, the same standard or the same performance indicators. And that was something that was missing before. And so it was really hard to then base a big intervention off just one data point. But now we're able to correlate between multiple assessments around the same areas. And so, for example, in math, I think it was 76% of our incoming fourth graders did not have the solid foundation in fractions that we would hope for them to have. They had some pieces, like they had some parts of it, but they didn't have all the different strategies. And so we were like, okay. So they started the year doing their fourth-grade curriculum. And then during their gradient support block that she mentioned is sort of that 30-minute section that is sort of provided to personalize, the entire fourth grade then did a fractions intervention because that was an area that we showed, like, if we're going to be able to engage deeply with fourth-grade math, we really need to be solid in, the students need to be solid in fractions. So that was based on triangulated data. And then through that, their progress monitoring, and then that ends. And that would, the whole fourth grade basically got an intervention because it was 76% of the kids really needed to have a deeper understanding in order to be successful in fourth grade.
And was it Ready Math or something that did the?
Well, we had multiple data points. So I-Ready was one of those data points. Yeah, but then we also had the universal screener for number sense. And then we had classroom assessments. I mean, it's SAS, so we had four points actually for this one.
And then, and then you're working with, so like in that case where it was broad, that was like all teachers?
All hands on deck.
Yeah.
You got it.
We've got this.
And then your math interventionist, your math coach and the teachers, yeah.
So when you look at the So when you look at the slides, if you look back at the slides and look at that intervention by academic area, that math number looks really small because I didn't include fourth grade. But really, in, an argument could be made that the entire grade level received a level of intervention for those first few weeks just as a boost.
I just, I, it's like, it's interesting. I'd love to, I don't wanna, I'll follow up after, just I wanna know more about how that works.
Yeah, great.
I don't wanna keep everybody.
And you had asked about progress monitoring too. So you're not gonna keep everybody, but I am. The progress monitoring is more student specific. So we also, we have classroom teachers, which we'll be sharing in the data meeting next month, looking at kind of how the classroom teachers are taking their data within the classroom to be able to share with our math coach and analyze and with literacy. But then if a student's receiving an intervention, they're gonna have really specific goals set for measuring the efficacy of the intervention. And that would be more of a, a progress monitoring component that's built into their intervention.
So if the whole grade needed it though?
If the whole grade needed it.
When are you gonna recheck that on the next?
They'll, they'll have assessments as a component of that intervention that makes sure that there wasn't, that it was effective.
They just had to, they reassessed after they did the fractions, they reassessed the whole group.
On that?
On that specific thing, because they just done the intervention with them, yes. And there will be kids that will remain to need, but it's not, it's like three or four versus, right, versus 70, right?
And there are gonna be times where we find data that lets us know, like, okay, this is something we wanna touch on differently the year prior. And there are gonna be times where we find data that really supports the type of instruction or methodology that's being used in the grade level prior. So it informs us in both ends.
When it's all hands on deck like that, and you're like, this is a general thing, how do you get other, like, how do you, how do you get everybody up leveled to the, in terms of teachers, to, to that? Like, what does that mean, all hands on deck? Do we bring an interventionist to explain to teacher, like to?
Oh, the teachers fully understand. So no, let me rephrase that. So the teachers are deeply engrossed in the curriculum and are experts in teaching it. But what I mean is that we then have the math coach and interventionists to be working with kids. So rather than a teacher working with their 19 kids during their 75 minutes of math, they now have maybe interventionist and the math coaches taking a small group or pulling from a couple rooms and bringing them together to support. Because even though we're saying that was universal, there were still kids in different places within fractions, right? So you're really trying to personalize it even across that. So that just means there's a lot of.
It's more, more small groups.
Yeah. And there's a lot of people with a lot of expertise to support that, right? And they can, they look at student work, they analyze it together. They're able to say like, oh my gosh, these are the four things that we really should be doing with kids, because they're the high leverage task that are gonna get what we want with this group of kids. So it's really just a collaborative effort with far more teachers, educators to support the group of kids than a typical classroom math block.
And we were doing some of this already, but what parts are new?
It was now built into our schedule. So it wasn't, so like now it's like, we know that this can happen without impacting core instruction. So part of it was before is that if I needed to provide math intervention to these three kids, I mean, I meant I was pulling out from three rooms, they might not be in the same schedule. So I had to avoid core instruction in this room. So that kid might be missing core instruction. And now they're never missing core instruction, because it's all built into our schedule. The other part is that we're able to, because we can look at the whole grade level, we don't have to match within the room. You can match within your grade level with kids that might be looking on, working on a certain strategy or working on a different skill.
That's cool.
It's, for the first year, we're feeling really good and we're excited to see where it takes us.
And there are certainly aspects of my role that were, the majority, I think, in little pieces and bits were done by many people across the school. I know a lot was on your plate with that. But I also think about, traditionally, the 504 coordinators have been the school counselors. When we look again at those SES numbers of amount of support needed for students right now, provided by those people, to have them be missing services to coordinate those meetings, doesn't feel good. Or are having to make up and reschedule and all of that. I think it, you know.
And you have the picture of all of it. They only had that little piece of data and the goal is to have that, to all of it to reside in one place, under one purview. It's exciting and exhausting.
Mostly exciting.
You speak for yourself, girl.
Well, thank you so much.
Of course, and.
You were so good.
Thanks. I would welcome any questions or contact at any time. I'm sure you can access my email address or, you know, so any, if anything comes up after the presentation that you're wondering about, please reach out. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Brianna.
Gives me some ideas for the March meeting or something, you know, if we wanna think about how we tell the story in March in front of the public. All right. So I just headed back to the retirement letter. You know, I think the board would like to extend a sincere thank you to Kim and congratulations on her retirement. It's pretty exciting, I can imagine.
No jealousy on the board.
All right. Does anybody have any other business? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, sure. Under which one?
I also have old business, just follow up on the police detail question.
Here are my notes. I talked to Chief King as I was, well, you know, give me a hot second. So I can, so I talked to Chief King and we talked about, so there are two officers about to graduate from the academy, which is, so it was, we started with the staffing. As you know, staffing has been one of the concerns. So that's where our conversation started. And then in January, there'll be another person joining the academy and in May, another person joining the academy. So they have two coming out soon and two more going in, which should be really helpful. That said, they've had other times where they didn't finish the academy or whatever, right? So like, that's a, that's their best assumption at this point. Right now, their goal, based on when they hire, is to permanently fill the SRO at CMS first, making that a single person. They've had people there, it's just not consistent and they'd really like to, and I understand that, that's their priority. That said, he does feel like, starting in sometime January-ish, when the other two people are fully out of the academy and joining, he thinks I can submit to him a calendar of saying like, once a week, four hours and see what the details can be filled. He feels like there's a high likelihood that we'll fill most of them, especially because we can be flexible around what day or what time. It is a four hour detail. He did ask that we talk further about whether or not, for example, if it was him that was doing it, because he's like, I might be someone that might do it, the option of like what that could look like if it was during a recess time, like being out with kids. He really feels like part of that is the relationship that needs to be built. And that was part of what Officer Amanda did here once a week, when she was here. And he's like, that piece is a concern of like, how do we rebuild that? He is hopeful with one of the hires that they, so they have four part-time positions, they have two people right now, they're hoping to fill the other two. If they fill that, he wants to use one of them to be here once a week. That same person every week to be like what Amanda used to be, which is awesome. And that would be in the police's budget, not your budget. So that's really exciting. So he is really committed to like, how do we get back to a place where the kids here have a relationship with the Stratum PD, which I think is awesome. So he did say, if we put the detail out and it was filled by Stratum PD, he would love to have conversation about like what that could look like. Because I had said, we had talked about parking in the parking lot and just driving around. And he said, yep, I see the need for that. I also think it would be really cool if that was a consistent person to start thinking about the relationship, especially, he's like, especially if it's me. He's like, it would be great for me. He's like, I have a ton of experience with kids, like I can, you know, and I said, I would share that with the board. The other thing he wanted you to know is that there's a retired SRO, Wayne Young from Newmarket, that's been filling in at CMS quite a bit as the SRO. And he, when they fill the official SRO position, he is still interested in doing some of that. So if he said, if he's one of the people that picks up the detail, he would be a great person to be in the school, going to cafeteria and the lunch, not necessarily going into classrooms, but just being a familiar face who has done SRO work in terms of like, what we had talked about before. So that is the update. And he said, if the board so moved, I could submit to him, here's what we're looking for. He said, I can present up to six months. And that he will get it to his staff to fill the details as much as possible.
Sounds positive.
Yeah.
What does SRO stand for?
School Resource Officer.
Is that person uniformed?
Yes.
And last year, we went through, last year, yeah, a whole, the public wanted us to look into getting a permanent SRO. And we, for a number of reasons, didn't recommend that, but did recommend moving forward with getting a police detail to be present. So do y'all, yeah, where should we go from here? Do you wanna look, just re-recommend once a week the four hours?
Well, excuse me, did, did he say that that's not part of our budget, but it would be part of, no?
Two different things. So the school board had budgeted to do a detail a week, one a week. He is also looking, if he is able to fill the other two part-time positions, to have one of them one day a week for a four hour, because they're part-time, it's a four hour shift, to be here. That is gonna depend on filling the part-time positions, but it is part of his budget to do that because of, Officer Amanda used to come here most Wednesday and Thursday mornings, was pretty typical for her. And there are benefits to the relationship between students and the Stratum PD and our families in the Stratum PD. So that is a goal of his as well, but those are two separate things.
I mean, they loved Officer Amanda, I know that, the kids, many of them, I'm sure. It, it sounds like it's uncertain until January though. Should we just like revisit once there's more certainty around what his staffing plans are? That's, that's the only thing I was thinking, is like if we don't know.
Well, Kate said they wanted some, a direction from us, what we wanted.
Yeah, I guess, yes, he's, I mean, he can't do anything unless I submit a calendar saying here's what, here's the weeks that we're in school, blah, 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 fill details. I think you could set parameters around that, like we only want it to be Stratum PD, we wouldn't want it to go out. Because if typically, when you request a detail, if they're unable to fill it, they would send it to local police departments. As a board, you could say, that's actually not what we're interested in, because part of what we're looking for is really that relationship. I mean, those are things that you guys can decide. And then we can set the parameters around that. He, he was feeling like, he, he's like, if we can fill some of these, which it looks like they're going to be, he's like, I would love to do that. He's like, I know Wayne Young would love to do that. I know there are other people that would love to do that. I just don't know that, I think maybe till January, if it would be as consistent as every week. But I guess the question is, you put it out and see what they say. He would have to come back to us and say like, actually, we can only fill it one week a month? Or like, wow, we were able to fill this and it looks, you know. The good news is, we have some flexibility. It's not like I'm saying Tuesday from eight to 12. Like I'm saying, like, in a week, we'd love this. He did say to try to put some parameters on that, because people wanna pick a time.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to, if, if that's what this, to, to ask for one detail block per week.
Yeah, I guess, I would just wanna say that, you know, we had talked about it as not an SRO, right?
Correct.
We did not want an SRO. And it was really someone who maybe sat outside, maybe drove around the parking lot, right? But now it sounds like you're talking about them, they're actually coming in the building. So it does.
No, I, because I got that message last board meeting and I said that to him. And he said, we can do that, that's, that's what you're asking. His, what he was proposing is we should have a conversation about, if it's him or Wayne Young, he does think that there's a reason to try to build that relationship. He understands the argument of like random people every week, a different police officer, like that would be unsettling and it would be in our building. And it's just, and who knows what their experience is necessarily with engaging with our developmental children of our age. But he did feel like there, if it was him or someone, that would be something to consider in order to support some of that relationship.
Would he come here and talk with us?
Yeah, that's what I was.
Yeah, he said he would.
I, I thought the recommendation I'd make after a budget to see how the detail, with the board, y'all decide on the detail. And if you want the change, I would ask him to come.
Yeah.
So you want just detail right now?
That's your mission. Right. And I mean, I would second the motion. So I mean, we can, actually.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah. Yeah, because I guess I'm just confused about what is the difference between Amanda and an SRO and maybe, you know.
So SROs just have training. She was not SMS's SRO, she was CMS's SRO.
So she would just come and walk around?
Oh, yeah. She was just going to the cafeteria, hang out with the kids, go out to recess, play ball. She wasn't going into classrooms acting as like an educator for the police department. She just happened to be CMS's SRO.
Yep.
The reason he was mentioning Wayne is that they do have training around being with kids this age. And that is a different, right? There's a very, you engage with young kids very differently than you engage with adults. And so that's sort of what he was talking about. I didn't mean come in and serve as an SRO. That's not what we were talking about. We were talking strictly detail, but he was like, if I'm the one that's here, it'd be great if I was in, if it happened to be during lunchtime or recess and getting to know the kids was what he was thinking. He wasn't like, I'm coming in and doing education in a classroom. That's not what we were talking about.
Does Wayne already possess the training from the SRO, since he's functioning as a SRO?
Yeah, and he's, he's actually a retired SRO.
Oh, okay.
He's a nationally trained SRO. He trains other SROs.
And it's not like a grade level SRO. He's, he's got whatever it is.
It's K-12.
Okay.
I, I worked closely with him in my previous district. So, yeah, he's, he's fantastic, but that's a whole different arena. And I think you should engage in a conversation of what that would entail, not what you passed in your budget for, for the purpose of that. That's why I'd recommend.
Yeah, that's different than just a detail, which was like, just be around just in case, right, kind of, right?
Yeah.
I don't, so my understanding, what I thought was, was it was not be around just in case. It was more about if there's a, if there's no distinguishable pattern of when a police officer is here, if someone was planning something, it was some sort of level of deterrent, is how I understood it.
Yeah.
Because it's not like, it wasn't like to say like, they're gonna do something if someone's here. It was more about like, just having police presence, driving through the parking lot, being visible would show that there's gonna be times or it's unpredictable when that's happening. We currently have a police officer that's parked out front every morning during drop off. And the police department does two or three, goes through our parking lot two or three times a day. So that is something that happens just naturally as a department, that's what they do. A detail would be four hours of sitting in the parking lot. It is what you talked about, once a week, sporadically.
Yeah. Okay, so is the motion, we go ahead with the detail for the next month with the assumption that we invite Chief King in next board meeting?
I wouldn't bring him in next board meeting, because we have, we have a lot going on in this area. That's why I'd recommend that we see what it looks like in January.
Okay.
And that we'd probably bring him in after the vote in March to talk about a different type of safety plan. But what I'm hearing is that we bring the detail as we put in the budget and which was approved, to get that up and running. That was the ask from the last meeting, where are we at with the police detail? So this would cover the police detail. And we bring Chief King in. I would, I would recommend March, April, talk about school safety, school safety planning, because the merits that Principal Lucas is talking about does have some benefits. You just have to weigh that out, what that looks like.
Yeah.
I think that makes good sense.
Okay. All right. So it sounds like I have a motion. Do you have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Bye.
All right, anybody? All right, 500.
I have a new business too.
Okay.
It's quick. I met, can I go?
Sure, please.
Okay. I met with Arlen, who's the new DEIJ officer for the district yesterday. We got coffee and talked about a training just for our board, which is part of our goals. And we thought maybe April would be a good month to do that, because there's just a lot going on from now through March. So I just wanted to get a temperature check from you guys and just let you know that that was kind of what I was thinking. Any, and see if you had any thoughts or comments.
I have one question for you. Does, can, is she prepared to be able to do it in the fashion that she would run a workshop for like the teachers? Like I've always, I don't.
Yeah, she was, she was like, what, yeah, what, what would you like, kind of?
I'm just interested, like, I know it's a volunteer, like you kind of opt in to do that if you want as a teacher, right? Like it's a professional development type of thing, or it used to be, where you could meet and you could, I think they did workshops.
Depends on what you're, there's a lot going on.
Am I not, am I not misremembering that?
I think you're misremembering. We didn't have.
There was like a professional development opportunities for people to, for teachers to voluntarily.
Oh, so we've done a lot of stuff on equity as a school, as at SAU or stuff like that during in-service days.
But there were workshops led by Andreas, I think, at the time.
Oh, yeah. But, and, and others of us were trained as well to run those, those workshops for the staff as well. Yeah.
I'm just wondering, I would just love to know, like, I, I would love to see what that workshop is. I don't know if the one that we went to the last time was the same? Maybe it was. Was it?
Well, yours is a little bit different. Well, you did school specific. The one we did for the joint board was a similar training that we had done for the entire staff.
Oh, okay. Right. That was my only recommendation was, I would, I just wanna know what, like, everybody gets. I don't want some special for just me.
Work with Ashley and Whitney, who are SMS chairs and kind of see what they're doing within SMS and see how we could integrate with that to kind of build on what they're already doing and just feel like a little bit more looped in.
I think a, a piece of that is we have our showcase in January. Again, the MLK, we're working with the Stratum racial unity team. And this year, our theme is the dangers of a single story, which is a beautiful, I can actually send you the link, but it's the idea of the importance of talking about the whole of a story. So we can talk about one part of a group of people or a person and we end up with this like false narrative. But if we talk about the whole, the, we create a richer understanding and a richer experience of our own engagement. And so the entire school is doing the showcase under that theme in January. So as board members, coming to that would be a really cool way to see how we're practicing and exploring the, the concepts of DEI within elementary setting.
Great. Well, I'll move forward with kind of tentatively April. And I don't know